The Assistant City Attorney, please report out a closed session.
Yes. So on item A on the closed session agenda, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, claim of Dublin Buick Pontiac by a motion made by Nora Davis and seconded by Ruth Atkins, and a vote of 4-0, the claim was accepted and Councilmember Bukowski was not present. On item B on the agenda, conference with real property negotiator regarding the remainder spur parcel, APN 049, 1504-00707, there was no reportable action. And on item C on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator by motion made by Dick Cassis and a second of Nora Davis, a vote of 4-0, with Councilmember Bukowski abstaining, direction was given to the agency's designated representative. And that concludes the closed session report.
Thank you. Adjourned this special closed session meeting, and we have a hefty agenda in front of us, including an entity that usually periodically comes to us, which is the management of Emeryville Services Authority, which has to do with personnel. So I'll call the regular meeting of Mesa to order. Please call the roll.
Here.
Member Davis.
Here.
Member Fricki.
Here.
Vice Chair Cassis.
Here.
And Chair Atkin.
Here. Please rise and join me with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no Mesa special orders of the day. Are there any citizens to be heard on matters not on the Mesa agenda? Does it have to do with personnel? Yeah, can we entertain anything that's not pertinent to Mesa?
You can, in terms of it's up to you.
Sure, okay. Come on up, Mr. Carpio.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Saturday, last Saturday, I went to a neighborhood meeting about a house that has been bought by Mr. Isom.
Speaker, please, I can't hear you.
Pardon me, are you hearing?
Yes, Speaker.
Okay. And in that meeting, I was part of it, we were about a dozen people, and the owner, Ali, I call him Ali, he is very concerned. He bought the lot for the house for about over $300,000, I don't know the detail, but it's already two years, and the thing has been stalled.
Mr. Carpio, could I ask you to speak a little louder?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm going to repeat. Last Saturday, I attended a neighborhood meeting in which a property that was bought by Mr. Ali, a developer, he came here several times to have his development, his houses made, and there has been objection, and the city council asked turning his request down. My concern is this, is that on Saturday, what I witnessed was very disturbing to me, and let me tell you how it happened. The discussion centered over the size of the building and the height of the building, but the way I saw it, it doesn't matter what Mr. Ali wants to build, there is going to be objection. And I ended up asking question to the person who made the strongest objection, and he said, and my question is, if you object so much about the building, why don't you buy the, why didn't you buy the building and made yourself a project instead of always sabotaging what the people want to do? And then his answer was, oh, I tried, it just didn't work. And so my feeling, and the feeling of everybody, is that that man is making an issue, and he's stopping the building development because he's jealous and he's upset that he didn't buy the lot, and that's very unfair. This is something that is terrible. What I see here is that we have a neighbor that is raising hell for somebody who wants to make a living in building, an apartment building, and he is doing it only by hate because he couldn't get the property, and that's very unfair. I'm calling on the city council and the planning commission to review that deal. The man need to make money on his investment. It's already almost two years that he bought that, and we cannot allow a rabble rouser, somebody who is mad about it, you know, to stop the project. It's no good. Thank you.
Any others to be heard? Okay, this takes us to a consent calendar. Is there a motion on the consent?
I'd move a consent calendar, but I'd like to pull item E.
Second.
Ken, John? Without exception?
I abstain.
Okay.
Item E. The concern I have here is, oh, there you are, Dolores, as I expressed before the meeting, is that the job descriptions, especially for the senior center, are obsolete, and I'm very, I fully want to move ahead with changing the job title, but these job descriptions are obsolete, and we don't want to in any way enshrine them as being okay.
Yes, we have been working with the department to get that particular job description updated. The incumbent has additional input to the changes, so rather than hold up the title change, we made a commitment to give her additional time, and we plan to bring back the revised, updated description at another meeting.
Dolores, I took liberty at writing a bunch of stuff on this as well, and if you could just take my comments this way, then you could chew on them. And also, I would just offer that we take a look at City of Berkeley and City of Fremont's senior center job descriptions, senior center director job descriptions, because if we're going with kind of an outdated and archaic document, you know, those are two cities that have very vibrant senior center programs, and then we could bring it up to date.
That's great. Thank you for that.
Fremont and Berkeley?
Fremont and Berkeley.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right, right. This particular description is the one on record now, so we didn't change any of the content except for the title and the who it reports to. So I will take that into advisement and pull those descriptions. I have access to them online.
That's great.
And we will make the changes and bring it back to you at a future meeting.
I move item E, and we'll look forward to seeing the revised job changes.
Yeah, thank you.
Speaker.
Okay, without exception. And this concludes the, well, I guess we need communications and reports from authority staff before we can adjourn the Mesa meeting and members of the authority. Okay, meeting's adjourned. This takes us to the redevelopment agency regular meeting, and I'll call this meeting to order and just note that we're still all here, and we've already pledged. There's no special orders of the day. Is there citizens to be heard? Okay. See none? Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, I'll note that I'd like to, I'd like to open the city council agenda as well to take D, 4D on the redevelopment, and item 5R on the city council agenda at the same time.
Mayor, Ken was trying to move, remove item D, or E, rather, from the consent calendar.
Oh, you want to pull that E?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I move the rest of the consent calendar.
Okay, without exception. Then we'll go to the city council agenda item after we finish the consent calendar to deal with the council agenda item related to 4D. Ken?
Have we, do we know what direction they're going? They're just asking for more money here, is that it? On this pedestrian, on Powell Street improvements here?
They have a scope of work that's written into their, that's in our packet about what they're going to do with that.
Okay, all right. I'll move approval.
Second.
Without exception. So the city council agenda is 5R. Do I hear a motion on that?
No move.
No second?
Second.
Any exception?
All right, what are we moving?
I don't know where we are.
What?
Council.
Council 5R.
5R.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I wanted to talk about that.
Okay, now's the time.
Okay. The reason I wanted to talk about it is because I looked at the, let me just go to I looked at the distribution of the below market rate units, and it appeared that they are somewhat clumped. If you look on Exhibit B, as in Boy, there's a site plan of the project and designation of affordable units, including floor plans, and it appears that the below market rate units tend to be more likely on the second floor, and there are quite a number that are right next to each other. And so I'm wondering how that's justified.
Yeah, here's coming up to talk about that.
So there, I don't know if this is working or not, this cordless mic? It is? Doesn't sound like it is, but I'll take your word for it. So there are two places within the affordable agreement that I'm going to refer you to that helps to answer this question. So one is the exhibit that, towards the back, the council member Fricki made reference to. And you'll see within there, there are a set of maps. So starting with the ground floor of the project, this is 65th Street, this is Hollis Street, this is the podium part of the project, and this is the townhouse part of the project. You'll see in this particular plan that the ground floor has a couple of units on Hollis Street, and then four units that are on the townhouse side, that is actually part of the podium project. So that's the first floor of a four-story structure. And then you'll see in this map, and this is backwards for some reason, there's the second floor on this side of the page, and the third floor on this side of the page. And you'll see there's a clustering of units, of below-market-rate units on the second floor, and then there's a scattering of units on the third floor. So first, second, third floors. We did not ask for any units on the fourth floor of the podium, because those are going to have some limited views, will have a premium. And as I've mentioned to you before, this BMR requirement costs the developer about $200,000 a unit in lost sales proceeds. And I neglected to say on this ground floor plan, in addition to the units that we have on the podium, we also have some townhouse below-market-rate units.
Can I just ask?
So there's.
How many, how many townhouse BMRs do we have?
There's four there.
Four, okay.
So there's a negotiation.
Can I ask, the townhouses, are they bigger than the ones that are on the second floor?
Let's see.
I had a hard, the document that you're looking at now, I had a hard time deciphering.
Well, that's, I wanted to kind of, if I could, I'll try and, bring me back to that if I'm not addressing in this next table.
Okay.
So there's some recognition that when we negotiate these agreements, that there's a cost to the developer. We don't try and get a perfectly even geographic distribution through the project. We try and get as best we can, but we often leave the top floor, the premium units, for example, out of the negotiation, recognizing that it's those premium areas where they are able to make up some of the lost revenues from the below-market-rate unit. Now, what I think is, this is in a different part of your agreement, is Exhibit 8, and it's impossible to read on here, but this table, if you look at it, in addition to trying to get a geographic distribution of units, we also in this project tried to get a distribution of units by bedroom size and by square footage. So we purposely, and this, this project has a lot of different types of units, so we purposely attempted to get as broad a number of types of units as we could, and not end up with just a few, you know, a limited number of different types. So I think in this table, you'll see the reference made to podium, podium, podium. On the, on the bottom of the table, you'll see on-grade townhouses. Those are two-bedroom, two-and-a-half of 1,233 square feet. And then on the next table, you'll see on-grade townhouses for the next three here, and those range, again, all of those are two bedrooms, two-and-a-half bath, ranging from 1,032 square feet up to 1,295 square feet. So there is some geographic concentration, but in exchange for that, we also got some variety in the unit types. So that's how we ended up where we are.
Is it, is it possible to have more of the townhouses be below-market rates? Because, because it seemed like it was conspicuous that there were only four in a field of many, and there were many below-market-rate units on the second floor, and a high concentration. So is it possible to move them to townhouses if the townhouses are not necessarily bigger than the ones on the second floor?
Well, we can try. This was the result of several months of negotiations, so if you want to send us back to the drawing board, then I would recommend that you hold this over, and we'll see what we can do.
That would be my desire, members, council members, colleagues. That's my motion.
So, just so I understand the motion, it's to substitute townhouses for the podium units?
Well, I don't need necessarily to dictate that level of detail, but I, but what my observation was that there is, that there, the percentage of below-market-rate units among the townhouses was conspicuously low, and the concentration on the second floor was high, and that, and I realize the, the, the argument that concentration is high so that there are different types of units, but I would like both.
So are you suggesting the agency underwrite the cost to do more townhouses?
No, no, I'm not. I'm suggesting that the number of the below-market-rate units on the second floor where I highlighted the concentration, I think the concentration, well, it's not simply me that says I think that the concentration is a bad idea. I think that when we've discussed affordable housing, we have highlighted the fact that that's something to avoid. And here we have a concentration that I thought we were trying to avoid, and when you compare it to the, the concentration among the townhouses, I think there's an opportunity to move some of the below-market-rate units, move some of the designations to some of the townhouses.
Okay, so how do you deal with the, with the price tag attached to doing that? I just want to understand what you're proposing.
I would like the agreement to, I don't know necessarily whether there is a cost associated with that change, because it takes away designation from the second floor and puts it, puts the designation on townhouses. Is it the case that the townhouses are more expensive? That it is? Okay, so.
Did you say that out loud, in case people are at home?
Yes, they will sell for more.
The.
Excuse me, just a quick second. Do you have a number on that, or just that it's more?
No, I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay, thanks, no, that's okay. Sorry, Jim.
The requirement is 20 percent. And if you have a project in which they were all townhouses, then 20 percent of those townhouses would be below-market rate, and as far as I'm aware, the redevelopment agency would not be subsidizing what is required, the 20 percent. Here we have a, a project that has both townhouses, which I can understand are more desirable, with this podium apartments, and it appears that they are, I don't want to sound pejorative, but they are, they're, they're kind of foisting the below-market, the 20 percent requirement onto the.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Can I make a suggestion here? I would say, this is really a question of policy. I mean, if we're going to have a policy that they're evenly distributed, then they should be evenly distributed. If they're not, if we're not going to have that policy, then, then we should change it so that they're only on the lower floors. But I don't know if it would be appropriate to make an adjustment for this particular project, but, but what he's saying is right. If you, if you're going to have them evenly distributed, then there should be some on the top floor, bottom floor, and all the other floors. So we should decide what our policy is going to be, and then adhere to it.
All right, can I have a question for Patrick? Patrick, you're a professional in this arena, and you've certainly handled many of these negotiations. In your judgment, do you feel, given the overall project, that these units are evenly distributed?
I feel that they're evenly distributed, and I feel that there are some benefits that we're obtaining from this project that I was keeping in mind as we went through the negotiations, that don't have directly to do with this agreement tonight, but they are building the entire greenway at no cost to the city, and they are, you will at a subsequent meeting be looking at a, an agreement for the purchase of parking spaces on the ground floor of the podium, and they're assuming all of the construction overrun cost risk on that project. So I felt like, overall, that what we negotiated here is beneficial to the city.
Well, the, the other thing is, if this were just cookie-cutter units, that they were all exactly the same, you know, you'd look at this plan, and you'd say, well, no, that's not evenly distributed. But what we're looking at is different sizes of units, different configurations of units, you know, whole, it's kind of like a real balancing act to move forward to get this to happen. I, I think you've done a pretty superb job here in negotiating this, and I think in term, if you look at not just the location, but also the sizes of the units, the configuration of the units, the prices, et cetera, et cetera, we've done a good job of even distribution. And I would suggest a substitute motion that we approve this resolution.
But I just ask the question, though, in a situation where you have the more expensive units on the top floor or whatever, he said that he wanted to allow the developer to make up that money for the other below-market-rate units. So does that mean in every other circumstance where we have the expensive units on the top, that none of those will be below-market-rate units? It's a question of policy, it's not a question of one, one project or another.
I, I think that it's okay, if you have, I think that it's okay if the top units, there are no below-market rates, because multiple floors, you can distribute 20 percent evenly without the top floor. But the problem is that with, if you took, if you, if you separated out the two, and you just applied 20 percent to the podium part of it, not the townhouses, then the concentration, there would be, there would not be a concentration, it wouldn't be so conspicuous. It's because of this shifting, and it's the shifting that I'm objecting to. And Mayor Atkin, you said, well, should, should the agency contribute money to this? Maybe that's, maybe that's what we should do. But this is obviously not what we said, when we said not to concentrate below-market-rate units. This is a concentration. You have, if you look on these floors, I mean, they're all below-market rate practically. I mean, there's one, there's, there's eight, I'm sorry, there's one, two, there's six out of eight on one floor. So there is no way to say that that's not concentration.
And of the eight units, are they all identically the same?
No, you need to refer that to that table that I had up there. They're all different.
Of course not.
Well, here's what I would throw into the mix. You know, I, there's always, in negotiations, there's givebacks and takes, and, and I hear what Pat's saying, is that given that in the development that, that Polty did at Powell Street, you know, they paid for half of the greenway, and in this section of the greenway, they're paying for the entire greenway. And I think that that's a big concession and helps the city. But I think there's some merit to what John is saying, and I, I think there's a logic in terms of size to the concentration. I don't, I don't like somebody being on one floor. But what I do like is John's idea of trying to get more townhouse below-market-rate units, because it just feels to me like we've got a better chance of getting to some of our lower-income residents that have families that way. So the trade-off I would be willing to offer is that if, and again, going on the assumption that we, that our staff has negotiated a good deal for, a fair deal for both sides, and now we're trying to change the deal, what I would say, I would be willing to, to drop below the 20 percent, either do one of two things. Either we pay the difference to pick up more of the townhouses as, as the redevelopment agency, or we cut the, the percentage of below-market-rate units that are required in the project in exchange for getting more townhouses. And I think that gives us a better chance to draw families and get kids into the schools, which is, is also a big goal. So I'd like us to go back and take another crack at the negotiation, but I'm sort of approaching this like I did the Oak Walk project, is I'd like to see it sort of cost-neutral to the developer from where we are right now at this point, saying that we've got a good deal, and within the confines of that deal, let's, let's try to move things around and have everybody come out whole, and end up with more townhouses. And however we can do that, I'd be willing to take a look at it.
I will be the third voice of the agency to say that I'd like to see some more townhouses also, if there's a way that we can figure this out. I would prefer going with fewer, lower than 20 percent, rather than the agency pitching in more money at this stage.
And I would say, I would try and stick with the 20. That's the law. I mean, it.
That's right.
It's.
Well, it's our, it's our guideline, it's not.
I realize, I realize, when I say it's the law.
Oh, right.
It's not.
Right.
The federal law, it's not the state law, but we, you know, the city council passed this, and there is downside to lowering the threshold for a particular case. I don't, there's obviously no precedent, but I just think if it's 20, if, you know, if, if you're going to, if you're going to talk the talk on the 20 percent, you need to walk the walk, and I, I hear what Pat's saying, that we got these other things, but a little bit apples and oranges. We should not be watering down the 20 percent because they paid for the entire greenway instead of half the greenway, and because they're going to. instead of half the greenway, and because they're going to incur any risk on the parking. So, those are different things.
Well, but, but it's, it's saving the redevelopment agency money in another area, instead of us paying for half of the greenway. I mean, that, that money, you know, then can be used in other ways, so.
I understand that money is fungible, but I just, but at the end of the day, when you look at this project, you will, you will have a project, for example, if you choose the less than 20 percent, that's less than 20 percent.
Right.
And that, I think, is, is, then we should change, then we should change it. If it's not going to be 20 percent, then we should, you know, we should.
Right. Well, part, part of what's making it difficult for me to say right now, whether I would say the redevelopment's agency ought to pay the difference, is I don't know what the differences have cost.
Exactly, we don't, I don't either.
And, and so, but I mean, I would be willing, as Ruth is, to go the other way, to change this, because we're very late in the game here. I mean, this has been before us a number of times, and we're, you know, we're sort of at the end game, and I'd rather not, you know, send staff back to, to say, okay, well that deal's off the table, and now we have to negotiate a new one. I, I'd like to, to do it in the spirit of, of trying to work within the framework of, of where we are. My only question about putting this over to do that is, we, we recess the first week in July, so we're not meeting for a month. Is there anything in terms of the timing of, of this approval that's going to be a big problem if this gets delayed for, for 30 days?
This is a condition of their building permit, right? It, yeah, this is a condition of their pulling their building permit, so it may delay their starting construction. I don't know if there's anyone from here from Pulte tonight that can speak to this or not.
Is there somebody back here? Well, but I mean, okay, so, I, I understand.
Could I just say one? I just want to remind us about this ordinance, because we've been administering it for a number of years now, and I, so there's some kind of, some basic elements to it that I think are worth kind of remembering about. We're asking for 20 percent of the units to be price-restricted, which I mentioned to you earlier is at least $200,000 a unit. There's 29 units in this project, that's almost $6 million of concession that the developer is making for, for you to add 29 units to your permanent affordable housing stock. It's a significant concession. When you go and look at other inclusionary ordinances of other cities, very few are at the 20 percent range.
Right.
They're at the 10 percent range and the 15 percent range. And so, what I've been trying to do throughout these negotiations is I'm trying to make it work on a project-by-project basis, and I think it's worth making some concessions in order for you to be able to get these, these 20 percent units. You're building up now an incredible stock of affordable housing as a result of this ordinance, so I think you've accomplished a lot, and I think you'll continue to, but there are limits as to, as to how far we can push each project before we just make it uneconomic to proceed. So, I'll go back and do more, but I.
I agree with everything that Pat said, I just think the concentration is not a good thing.
All right.
Mayor Atkin, I have a substitute motion.
Okay, I'm confused about which motions are on the floor at this point, so you.
Right now, I believe we have a motion by Ms. Davis, and seconded by Councilmember Cassis to approve the resolution, so a substitute motion should be done. That was right at the beginning.
Oh, oh.
I made a motion, I didn't get a second.
I beg your pardon.
Right.
And so, what I'm going to do is I'm going to remove my second from that.
Right. Mayor Atkin, if, if I could say something. We haven't, we have empowered Patrick to enter into these negotiations, and certainly he has demonstrated over the years that he's acted in very good faith, and we have indeed built up our stock of affordable housing. It is unfortunate that we come down after we've been party to these negotiations all along, and we've seen what's been happening, to come at the last minute and start tinkering. Now, I think we have a very good deal here. I would be very reluctant to see this council, at this stage of the game, say, no, we weren't involved in the negotiations here, we authorized someone to do it, but now we're pulling back and saying we don't like the deal, and we're not going to move forward with it, and delay the, the start of construction. We're in June now. We delay the start of construction another month, that throws it more into the winter months. We're not looking at a larger picture. What we're getting here is affordable units, and I, I think we've negotiated in good faith, and we've gotten a good deal, and I would hope you would second my motion, Dick.
Can I say something? I don't want to beat this to death, I just would ask Patrick if, from, from this point forward, would we consider, you know, making the, either adhering to the policy we have, or, or just giving you the discretion to do what you think should be done, or give it to the housing community? I'm just trying to come to some resolution on how we're going to go forward, because John Fricki's raised some points here, maybe it's not necessary, appropriate to stop this project, but it is out of conformance with what we're supposed to be doing, so.
It's, it's, it's appropriate for the following reason. We have this before us to evaluate. Why is it before us? It's before us to look at. I looked at it, I read it, and it's not acceptable. And so, if we are to say, well, this one is acceptable, but the next will not be, that is not what we're here for. We're here, if, if the timing is bad, that is not our fault. And so, it's before us to approve or not to approve, I find fault with it. And so, I brought that to the attention of my colleagues.
Is there a motion?
My motion is that.
Well, there's a substitute motion.
You have a substitute motion, I'm looking for a second.
What's the substitute motion?
The substitute motion is to approve the resolution, move forward with the project, and see that we get an additional 29 affordable housing units for people to enjoy and live in.
Is there a second?
Could I ask, could we hear?
Dice for lack of a second.
Could we hear from Pulte? I mean, there is somebody here, you know, that was going to speak if, I mean.
Yeah, sure, come on up.
Might be helpful.
Good evening, councilmembers, I'm Kevin Ma, project manager with Pulte.
Kevin, you can raise that up, so you know.
Yeah, you have to talk right into it.
Okay. You know, we respect the council's ideas that have been poised about the evenly-distributed units. You know, I think the Councilman Cassis brought up a good point about trying to, you know, if we want to put the deal back on the table of looking into, well, one, if there's a way to not hold up our construction process, and then try to find a medium in terms of the settlement of the, of re-looking at the units, I think that would be kind of our position at this point if, if tonight's motion was not passed.
So, I'm not sure I totally understand what you're saying. You'd be willing to take another look, and this isn't going to knock the project on its ear because of the, of a 30-month, or 30-day delay?
Well, I think the key is if we can find a way to keep our permitting and construction on pace while, you know, if, if the, if it had to be put back on the table, I think that would be one of our primary goals.
Well, what, then let me ask staff, what's, what's the status on that? Is there a way to go forward while these, while these details get worked out?
I think, Councilmember, if I may, I, I think it's occasionally in, I'm sorry, occasionally in terms of what's in the conditions of approval, so this is a requirement and their conditions of approval that this agreement be in place before they get their building permit. Pulte has worked very diligently to get their permit, and it's ready to be pulled. And what we could do is, with the council's permission, just tie that condition, and we can do an addendum to an improvement agreement we already have with Pulte, that this is tied to getting a certificate of occupancy. So, we'll come back with you much sooner than that, but saying that they won't get their certificate of occupancy until the affordability agreement is in place, and that would allow them to commence construction if you want this to go back.
Right, because what they're going to construct's going to be the same, it's just a question of, you know, which units are below-market rate and which ones aren't, so.
That's a very good suggestion, Carol, thank you.
I would just note that there is another condition of approval related to the affordability agreement that is tied to the certificate of occupancy, which is that basically the housing department staff needs to go out and inspect those units and make sure that they've been built according to the approved affordability agreement. So, we'd be having the approval of the affordability agreement and the inspection of the units for conformance with that agreement, both tied to the same thing, so we'd have to make sure they happened in a timely way.
As long as a Pulte rep is here, I, I have to take a little liberty here, I don't usually go off, but, you know, there was another project in town that suffered major construction defects, and then we found out that the BMR units in that project were finished differently than the market-rate units. Are you contemplating any kind of disparate treatment between how those BMR units get constructed and finished versus the other units?
No, we have not made any type of kind of discretionary choices in the construction types with these type of units. I mean, everything, you know, internally within Pulte, you know, most of the team doesn't even know which ones are market-rate and which ones are below-market. It's just, you know, everything is built to one's high-level specifications.
Yeah, I mean, an example of the project that, that the mayor's talking about is the, the ceiling was just left raw in, in some below-market rate units, and, and that wasn't the case in, in the ones that, you know, that were at market rate.
They had a finished ceiling.
Yeah, that's unfortunate to hear. I mean, from the Pulte standpoint, we view our market-rate homeowners and our below-market rate homeowners as one and the same, there's no difference in the two, and kind of our mission is to have this homeowner-for-life philosophy, you know, no matter, you know, what they pay for that unit.
Mayor Atkin, I have a question for the city attorney. How can we move this forward, move the construction forward, and make the changes that are sought by Councilmember Fricki, and I assume the rest of the council?
I think in terms of, if, in terms of the council, if in the making the motion that you're willing to tie this, kind of the drop-dead date to the certificate of occupancy, staff will just memorialize that in an agreement with Pulte. I, I would certainly, though, I don't think anybody's interested in this negotiation taking that long, because you're probably not looking at a C of O until 18 months, so it's, there should be some direction from council, you'd like to see it much sooner than now.
Could you phrase that motion for me? I'd like to change my motion.
So, I, the motion would be that this goes back to staff for further negotiations with Pulte, consistent with the direction given by the city council, and that Pulte will be allowed to pull, pull their building permit if all other conditions precedent to that have been pulled, and that they are required to have an affordability agreement in place before the certificate of occupancy.
That's my motion.
And I'll second that.
Substitute motion, thank you, Dick.
Okay, please call the roll, I want to call the question here.
This is something I brought attention, to the attention of the city council. Councilmember Davis, is it your motion? I mean, this should probably, probably be my motion, though.
Well, I'll withdraw my second, so you can make the second.
Yeah, I, I think that that makes perfect sense.
Okay.
I'd also like to ask that in the future, when these projects come to us, can we have a listing by floors of the number of below-market rate units that are on each floor, so that we don't have to go through and pick them out, just a summary?
That's really more of a staff.
Yeah, the second to that motion. Can we do this by acclamation, or do you want a roll-call vote?
Doesn't matter.
Roll-call, please.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Bukowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fricki.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cassis.
Aye.
Mayor Atkin.
Aye.
Mayor, and could we just, before you leave the podium here, and it's not what we just got through talking about, you're aware from your last project, and we're aware from that project and many others in town, that we are, we are just having these continuing problems with leaks in these new developments that are, that are being constructed. And I know you've got a team of people to jump in and get them fixed, and not everybody has that, and that's a good thing. But what are you doing on your end to, to limit these problems? Because we've got a whole bunch of new folks in town that, that are occupying these new units, that are, they're pretty unhappy campers for a good reason.
And some of them can't occupy their units.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, I appreciate the concerns of the council. From an internal perspective, this Pulte, you know, every development that we do, we get better at, at the way that we build out these units. And in addition to making improvements internally, we have gone out to third-party consultants, private, that we privately fund and hire, that go in and do a very thorough inspection of not only during the design-development stage, but also during the construction stage, to make sure that we are, that we are installing the most waterproof type of assemblies that we can. So, you know, we, we feel the same concerns that the council does with some of these water intrusion issues, and we're trying, you know, we're basically taking as many steps as we can internally and externally to provide a better finished product to the homeowners.
Well, I know nothing.
It seems to me the issue of building watertight buildings has, is, it's not rocket science. I mean, there's lots of buildings from the 1600s still standing on the East Coast that don't leak. I mean, why is this a different day and age?
I appreciate that concern. It's, it's, when you actually step back and look at the overall picture, there's so many parts and pieces that go into this house. I mean, we kind of consider a unit, it's kind of a dynamic living object. You know, it's kind of, it's always shrinking, expanding, you know, moving, but on very small scales. So, it is a very difficult process, I think, when you step back and look at all the different dynamic pieces that go into this building, and kind of our mission is to get better at controlling and installing more, less variability and higher reliability into the assemblies.
See, see, so what you're really saying is that you have better quality inspection, you do like a double, triple inspection.
Exactly.
And that prevents the problem, so if we had greater inspection in other areas, then we would be able to eliminate the problem as well.
Yeah, that's one of the components, yes.
Well, you said we, we who?
We, the city of Emeryville.
Well, we, Ken, you say that, we, we inspect according to the Uniform Building Code, and I, I think our inspections are totally what they ought to be, we're not the problem.
I'm going to cut this off, because this is not your main.
Right, let, let me just quickly ask one other thing.
Sure.
Knowing nothing about construction, but just what we seem to hear over and over again, two of the most major problems, and maybe you know this better than I do, because you do this every day, seems to be with the flashings, and seems to be with, with the people they turn loose with the nail guns, and, and penetrating areas that then end up leading to leaks. So, whatever you can do to plug in more looks and more inspections at those stages, so when that's happening, it seems to me it would do us all better. I mean, obviously, you don't want to have to come back and fix things either.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Point taken, thank you.
This takes us to administrative item 7A, and I.
Move to continue the item.
Yes.
We're, we're on the redevelopment, can I second?
Yeah, okay. So, we, we will continue, continue this till July. I think this must be the record, a number of continuances.
Well, that's good, means people are still talking.
This takes us to B.
Move 7B.
Now, this is in conjunction with the council thing, so you want to.
This for, this for parcel.
Second.
Right, but I mean, do we want to?
Yeah, I'm going to handle that separately.
Oh, separately, okay.
But right after this.
Okay. Oh, Ken, second it.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay.
Move 7C.
No, hold on, I'm taking 8A, 8B from the city council agenda.
Oh, okay.
Move approval.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Move 7C.
Checking.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move 7D.
No, I'm going to take council agenda item 8C.
Okay, so moved.
Checking.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. And then, this is D.
So moved, second.
Mayor, could I, could I ask, though, we're, we're going to get a PowerPoint presentation on this and be able to look at a lot of stuff, so I'd, I'd like us to hold, hold this up.
To July?
No, uh-uh, no, I mean, to hold it up, in other words, the council agenda items, you know, that this is in conjunction with, we're supposed to be getting a PowerPoint presentation on the interchange as part of the council agenda, so can we hold up voting on this, unless you're going to have them do the PowerPoint right now?
Yeah, and I, and I know Councilmember Fricki has some slides he wants to show to you.
Oh, good, okay.
So, okay, so we'll take the, the two resolutions from the agency and council after the presentation.
I guess I didn't see, all right, I didn't see your connection.
Okay, Hank, do you want to lead off on this staff report?
Yes, well, first of all, I'd like to introduce Heidi Orin, who's going to help out on a presentation on the project, and the pro, the project presentation will include a bit of history on the process through which we were driven by Caltrans to arrive at this point, and bring us up to where we go forward from here, and with that, we'll, we'll try and keep the history as brief as possible, other than where it is pertinent to emphasize certain things. Also, when we get to the presentation of the interchange itself, the roundabout interchange, I'd like to give Heidi an opportunity to lead us through the, the routes to and from the freeway that are part of this project, introduce the bike ped. Introduce the bike-ped component, and then, because of the interest in the bike-ped pathway as part of this project, we'll go into a little bit more explanation of that part of it. I'd also like to mention that I do have larger prints, color prints, of the kind that you'll be seeing tonight for each of the council, if they would like to have that to look at at some later time with any questions they may have. So with that, this is Heidi Orin of HQE Incorporated.
Thank you, Hank.
And then, before you start your comments, I just want to thank you, Hank, for the memo outlining the, the history of this project. That was very informative, because it's been confusing to me, so I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, mayor and council members, for having me here tonight. As Mr. Van Dyke mentioned, we'll try to keep this brief and open it up to questions, so that if we skip over anything, I'd be happy to try to answer questions for you. We'd like to start with a little bit of background. In 1999, Caltrans approved the original project study report, which contained various alternatives to provide access to and from the city of Emeryville via westbound Interstate 80, which is not provided today. Out of that project study report came what was, what has been known as alternative two, which was the preferred alternative. Subsequent to that PSR approval, Caltrans initiated a value analysis study, wherein the value analysis team recommended looking at roundabouts in lieu of signalized intersections. Caltrans then began to analyze roundabout alternative. Everyone was very much in favor of that. However, due to their lack of expertise, I think, as everybody knows, there are not a lot of roundabouts in California, Caltrans stalled a little bit, and so in '02, the city hired a consultant to help Caltrans through that roundabout analysis. I believe his name was Michael Walworth, and I believe he's known as the Mr. Roundabout.
Well, we, we initially hired Kim Lee Horn, who was under contract at the time with CMA for some work, and it facilitated getting him on this contract because of the regulations Caltrans has to go through in, in, in adding consultants to the project. So Kim Lee Horn had experience with roundabouts and took us further along in the traffic analysis of it.
Right, and then I believe Mr. Walworth stepped in with some of the geometrics to go along with that traffic operations analysis. Thank you, Hank. In 2004, we hit some state funding shortfalls, and the project came to a halt. We're at the point now-
That's kind of an understatement.
-April of '06, where we have obtained roundabout concept approval from Caltrans and FHWA. We've stepped through the supplemental project study report process, which Caltrans required us to do to implement that roundabout alternative into the original project study report, so that two alternatives could be carried forward and analyzed from an environmental standpoint. PSR alternative two, if you look at your screen, the purple you're looking at is the existing condition. Green is, or it's kind of yellow here, is the proposed improvement for that original project study report alternative two. I'm going to try to use my pointer here a little bit, so you can see. This alternative provided access to and from the city of Emeryville in the westbound I-80 direction, which is this direction, via the off-ramp, almost as it exists today, to a signalized intersection at this location, across a single overcrossing structure, to a signalized intersection at the new off-ramp, and then through a third signalized, signalized intersection, and up to Shellmount Street into the city of Emeryville. Conversely, to head eastbound on I-80 from Emeryville via Shellmount, you would come along Shellmount, down the Link Road, through the signal, and across onto eastbound Interstate 80.
Can I, can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
Is it anticipated that those signals would be timed to work together, or might someone get stuck three times trying to get into Emeryville?
I believe the idea would be to have them synchronized and timed. In fact, they most likely would have to be timed with the Ashby-Shellmount intersection as well. Ash, I'm sorry, Seventh Street and Ashby, which is just under the, down here where my pointer is, just under the railroad in Berkeley. So I believe that all of those would need to be timed.
I lost you there. I don't see what, what's going on at Seventh and Ashby?
Yes, there was a concern, in fact, in the value analysis study, one of the concerns that the city of Berkeley had was that the addition of these three signals, in conjunction with Seventh Street and Ashby intersection, would cause backup and delays along Ashby.
Okay, so now, take me from San Pablo Avenue in Ashby. That's the last signal before you get to the freeway.
No, it's Seventh Street and Ashby.
Seventh and Ashby.
Seventh Street and Ashby.
Two more after.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, there is, right there by the, oh, that's right.
There's one by the, by the redwood road.
Yeah.
All right, okay, thank you.
Sure. In order to access westbound Interstate 80 from the city of Emeryville, you would come down the Link Road, take a left at the intersection, through this signalized intersection, and access it through the loop movement here. This PSR alternative assumed that the frontage road and the new connection would remain unsignalized and operate at a level of Service F, current stop control. This is a concept-
Wait, wait, are you going to do that more, in more depth, what you just said?
I can go back to it if you would like.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, right now, there's, there's a stop sign there.
Yes, correct, and this would operate as a four-way stop.
Oh.
According to the proposal in the original project study report.
If I could add, that this proposal, I think, has been given the kibosh, because the city of Berkeley really does not like the stop signs, the traffic signals on top of the freeway, because it impedes the traffic that now flows smoothly.
So we don't want to spend a lot of time on PSR two.
Okay, it has not been, been given the kibosh, however, because it needs to be carried forward through the environmental process. We understand it is not the preferred alternative. Okay. The Walworth roundabout concept, we had mentioned earlier when Kim Lee Horn was preparing the traffic operations studies, Mr. Walworth came up with this concept, as you see with the three roundabouts. Our charge, HQE's charge, was to take this concept and obtain approval from Caltrans and FHWA for a roundabout alternative that would be operationally acceptable. This is the alternative you see here before you. I'll just walk you quickly through, let me see if I can-
Can you go back to the last diagram? I mean, with all the-
Oh, sure.
-topography in there, that's just really hard to read. Is, is, this is the same thing, right? Just without all the spaghetti?
Yeah, right.
Or is it?
It is.
Or is it different in some way?
I think it's the same thing.
It's it up.
It is the same with some differences. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
And the differences are highlighted.
Oh.
This alternative provides for access to eastbound, let me orient you, I'm sorry, north is this way, this is eastbound Interstate 80, westbound Interstate 80 is this way, Shellmount, Bay Street, and the Bay, Emery, Point Emery, up here. The difference between this Walworth concept and what we've arrived at today that is now acceptable to Caltrans is this, we've taken out this loop-on ramp to access eastbound Interstate 80. We've provided a bypass for the eastbound off-ramp to Shellmount Street, and we have eliminated this overcrossing structure that was proposed by bringing the ramp over to this location, and having some partial takes at the KRE radio station property that's located in this northeast quadrant. Is this diagram still too hard for everybody to read? Too dark?
Maybe it's just me. It's kind of a cool, you know, abstract. Where do you get all that spaghetti from?
I apologize. Next time, I'll take the topography off of it.
I see that.
Blue is the existing freeway, interstate, and its various ramp entrance and exit components. This is the existing ramp from westbound to Ashby. Similarly, the existing ramp coming from Ashby headed westbound to San Francisco and Emeryville. Brown is the structures. Again, this will construct a four-lane overcrossing structure with a bike and ped Class 1 path on that structure. The bike path is shown in purple here, and I'll go over that in a moment. Ramps are in red, local roadways are in orange, and then I'll just walk you through some of these movements. Again, the purpose of the project is to provide access to the city of Emeryville via the Ashby interchange for westbound Interstate 80, which does not exist today. So if you're coming westbound on Interstate 80, you would take the off-ramp, you would come through around this roundabout, across the bridge, through this roundabout, and up to Shellmount Street to access the city of Emeryville.
Heidi, could you explain the direction of traffic when in the roundabout, just so that everybody understands?
Absolutely. Direction of traffic is always counterclockwise in a roundabout.
Not sure in Britain.
Yes, thank you, mayor. In the United States, it will be counterclockwise.
And are there, the traffic, this eliminates the traffic lights that we saw on the other alternative?
That is correct. This roundabout alternative actually replaces the signals with roundabouts. They are a form of traffic control different from signals, so that is correct. There would be no signals. Other than, I should take that back, there will be a signal up here at the eastbound off-ramp intersection with Shellmount Street. In order to come from Emeryville and head west on I-80, one would come down Shellmount, take a left onto this Link Road, come around the roundabout, counterclockwise, across the structure, and onto the loop ramp, and we're adding an auxiliary lane here as well. An auxiliary lane currently exists at this location with the existing on-ramp. We're moving it back and extending it about 300 meters. That is one of the mainline benefits of this project, that we've, currently operates at unacceptable levels, and this will make it operate at acceptable levels of service in 2030. So that is a project benefit. In order to access Berkeley from the eastbound direction, you do have to come through the roundabout. You would come off the ramp, and you would come here and come through the roundabout, and then onto Ashby Avenue. Similarly, coming from Ashby Avenue, you would enter the roundabout, again, across the bridge. If you were headed for the frontage road, you would, oops, I'm sorry. You would go all the way around the roundabout and head to the frontage road, and westbound or westbound.
And, and what happens at frontage road with this roundabout? Does, do the stop signs still continue to exist?
They do not. This would be a free-flow roundabout, just as the others are, and vehicles would yield to vehicles that are in the circle, of course. The entry legs yield to vehicles that are in the circle.
And, and that, that includes the frontage road traffic?
That's correct.
So if we're, if we're talking about rush hour time, how many, roughly how many cars can that roundabout that's closest to Emery Point there, how many can that handle?
This handles quite a few, actually. In the peak hour, it handles over 1,500 vehicles in 2030.
I'm sorry, let me ask it in a simpler way. But at, at one time, roughly, how many vehicles can be in that roundabout?
Well, they're, they're constantly moving.
Right.
And according to the projections I'm looking at, at any one time, there are going to be, in the peak hour, between 1,000 and 1,500 vehicles using this in the peak hour.
Okay. At, at one time, if we just do a snapshot, it's 5:05 PM.
Oh.
How many cars are going to be in that?
I don't know that I could answer that.
But what you're asking is how many car lengths fit, fit into that roundabout, right?
Yeah, I don't-
As though it was part, they were all parked and stationary.
Yeah, I don't know that I could really answer that question off the top of my head. It's not a parameter that we look at.
Okay, does this anticipate, right now, there's two stop signs if you're coming toward, from Berkeley to Emeryville on, on the frontage road.
Correct.
This, does this eliminate both of them?
Yes.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yes. No stop signs at all. It will operate free-flow movement through the roundabout.
Okay, and what, what's the relative speed anticipated of frontage road traffic versus folks doing this, trying to, you know, get off and use the roundabout to, to get to frontage road?
Well, one of the pertinent requirements of designing roundabouts is to slow traffic down so that they're going only 15 to 25 miles an hour when they're in the circle. And you do that through the geometry of the entrance leg by providing very tight curves in there. So the vehicles in here are never going to be going more than 15 to 20 miles an hour. I believe, and correct me if somebody thinks I'm wrong, I believe the frontage road is posted at 35.
I think it is.
Okay. So that would be the relative difference, then. So the roundabouts will be designed to slow traffic down as it enters the circle.
Okay, I was just concerned that traffic coming off frontage road would be entering the, the roundabout at a much higher speed than folks that are trying to, to get down there and go around the roundabout and then, and get on frontage road to come to Emeryville.
Right. Again, the geometry, the entrance geometry of the leg will be designed to slow people down.
Before they get there.
Yes. Any other questions?
I think a lot of us, I'm interested in how the bike access is from the Shellmount bike path.
Okay. If you can see the purple on here, for the roundabout alternative, let me start by saying the Bay Trail is in light purple coming around here, existing Bay Trail. You would cross the western leg of the roundabout at grade, come across on a class-
Would that be demarcated by a crosswalk?
Yes, that is correct.
Or some kind of striping or something?
Crosswalk, yes.
Okay.
Standard crosswalk. You would be on a-
But no, but no signal?
No signal. No, no signal. You would be on a separated Class 1 bike path, 10 feet wide in this area, with buffer zones, landscape buffer zones. Come across and be contiguous with the overcrossing structure here, wherein you'd be separated physically by a barrier from all traffic, vehicular traffic.
When we, when I talked to Maurice about it, he said the part actually over I-80 is a little bit lower than the, than the vehicle roadway.
That's existing.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Say it again, mayor?
No, that, the, the bike path over the freeway, well, I suppose it's both bike and ped, right?
It, well, it's, yes, it's bike, ped, and vehicles at this point, separated by a barrier.
Okay, but my understanding was that, that the bike and ped portion of, of that bridge was physically lower than where the vehicles would be, would be driving?
No, it would be at the same elevation.
Okay. And then, but this bridge, as it's currently conceived- And then, but this bridge, as it's currently conceived, meets ADA wheelchair access guidelines?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. And then you would cross, come down and cross at grade again at the off-ramp from the eastbound direction, and then once again at grade here at this entrance and exit, and come up to this location at the intersection of Shellmount and the new Link Road. Now, again, this path, I have a little section. So, you know, the major differences between the roundabout and PSR Alternative 2 is that the roundabout provides the Class 1 bike facility with separate PED facility on the bike facility itself, and it has no signals, whereas PSR Alternative 2 has only a Class 2 bike facility with contiguous pedestrian pass. In other words, the vehicles would travel here, Class 2 bikeway, bicycles would travel here, and then a five-foot sidewalk. And of course, PSR Alternative 2 has signalized intersections.
What's the difference between a Class 1 bicycle facility and separate pedestrian, pedestrian facility?
There is, there is none. It's a combined path.
It's just 10 feet.
Councilman Fricki, yeah. I was trying to show the difference between the pedestrians being right up against the roadway.
Do you think there's any question of safety for pedestrians or bicyclists to be crossing freeway off-ramps?
For the roundabout alternative?
Yeah, for any alternative, actually.
I'm sure that there is some inherent problems with safety, but for the roundabout alternative, studies have actually shown that bicycle and pedestrian accidents drop some 30 to 40 percent when roundabouts are used compared to signals.
My understanding of those studies is that, that's if the bicycles are in the vehicle lane, right?
No, my understanding is that's if you don't have, if you provide a separate bicycle path.
I have a question.
So the 40 percent reduction is, it's 40 percent less than if you are in the vehicle lane, or is it 40 percent less than?
It's 40 percent less than if you're, if the bike is traveling in the vehicle lane through a signal.
Okay.
Because there are less conflicting movements in a roundabout.
Okay. Then that begs the question, though, of whether there would be a greater reduction in accidents if you simply had bicycles and pedestrians segregated entirely? Yes?
No, I-
Is there a study of that?
The way I understood the study was that the reduction compared bicycles riding separately in a separate path, rather than riding with vehicles.
Okay.
That was my understanding of the study.
Right. But if they're, if, no, I don't think that that, because they're not entirely separate. They still have to cross this crosswalk, crossing a roadway that's an off-ramp where the, or the Frontage Road. Frontage Road, 35 miles per hour. Speed limit on an off-ramp could be more, 45 miles per hour.
It's when compared to a signalized off-ramp, so regardless of whether they're crossing at the roundabout off-ramp or at the signal, speeds are actually higher when people are coming through signals, and thus, I think the fatality rate was much higher, too. There was like a 90 percent reduction in fatalities, and there are less conflicts.
Can you speak-
Because in a roundabout, you're only going in one direction, whereas a signal, at a signalized intersection, you have many more different movements to look for.
Can you speak to the pedestrian and disabled access in this plan? Because, because, like, for example, if you're, if you're legally blind-
Mm-hmm.
-and you come to a signalized intersection, you wait and you listen to the traffic surges to know which direction the signal is, the traffic is moving and when you can cross in terms of having the auditory cue.
Right.
If there's no button to push or no lights there that would stop the traffic, and they're near roundabouts where the traffic theoretically is continuous, how is a blind person going to negotiate that crossing?
I think that's a good question, Mayor Adkin. I think it's something that we need to look at as the project proceeds. I have seen roundabout concepts where they do install PED push buttons for that very reason, for blind people.
I can't imagine that this is going to pass ADA, all of ADA. It's not, ADA is more than just grade increases, you know?
Yeah, I understand.
So stuff like this.
Yeah.
But-
These can be designed to be ADA compliant.
Okay. So my next question is, is that you can hear from us, we're interested in the non-motorized aspects of this design. And so when we approve, if we approve our resolutions tonight to go ahead with preparing the environmental document, we will have public, we will have an opportunity to raise these concerns that then could be brought into design consideration, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, that's not entirely true. That's not entirely true. The staff report says that the existing plans will be fine-tuned. This is page, page two of the staff report. Fine-tuning is not going to fix this design.
Mayor Adkin, if I may, quote from the staff report, and this is something that certainly has been said over and over again by the Caltrans people. This is an issue that will receive a lot of public attention during the public hearings from the like, especially from the bike lobby. The input and suggestions coming from it will be evaluated and may result in some additions and modifications to the, to the design that will improve the final product. Additionally, pardon me, John, if I may finish?
I'm waiting.
Thank you so much. Very polite. Additionally, Caltrans has staff that will be focusing solely on the bike pedestrian features, and will be looking at ways to improve safety at the locations where safety features can be worked into the at-grade crossing. The whole point here is, we have a very active bike community in both Berkeley and in Emeryville, certainly a pedestrian community. These will be very lively hearings, and I believe Caltrans understands nothing will move forward until we have resolved these safety issues that affect the bike and the PED people and the handicap people. What the action we're being asked here to take tonight is to move forward with these appropriations so that we can still be in the game on this Ashby-Shellmount new configuration, which is critically important to the future of Emeryville, and I would move this resolution.
Were you done with your presentation?
Yeah, I was just going to go into, you know, briefly, we're moving into the PAED phase, and I think that Councilmember Davis has summed it up eloquently.
Well, weren't we going to have a presentation from John, too, before we move forward?
John wanted to show some slides, too. Do your slides have different information than what Heidi presented, or is there a comment that you just want to make on the design?
Michelle, what do you want to show?
I have a presentation, 12 slides.
Okay. How long do you think it'll take?
Not long.
Okay.
Mayor, before we do that, I've got a question, though. Can you go back to that? No, the one that's got all the, there you go. Would you highlight one more time?
You bet.
I think there's three at-grade crossings for the bike PED path to cross. So maybe start over on the Bay side.
Yes, absolutely. Starting from Point Emeryville, you would cross at grade across the Frontage Road.
Okay, so let's stop. So that's Frontage Road traffic that's continuing either south or north on the, on the Frontage Road, okay?
That is correct.
So that'd be two lanes of traffic you have to cross there.
That is correct.
Okay.
And then you would have an at-grade crossing here.
That's not true. It's three lanes.
I'm sorry?
Three lanes. Three lanes.
Yes. This is a two-lane entry leg. Thank you, Councilman Fricki, for the correction. This is a one-lane exit leg. This is a two-lane entry leg.
Okay.
So it would be three lanes. That is correct.
And then, and then coming this way?
Okay. And then the next one would be here, which is a two-lane entry leg.
And that's, that's the folks coming off of the eastbound 80-
Yes.
Heading for Berkeley?
Yes, correct.
Or Emeryville.
No, not on that red thing.
No, not just for Berkeley.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Emeryville actually has a bypass here. And then here, this is a one-leg exit from the roundabout and a two-lane entry. So three lanes here.
And what are we crossing? Oh, I see.
Here-
So that's going to be traffic going both directions there.
Yes, yes. And each one of these is separated, this one and the one up by Point Emery is separated with a wide median refuge area for people to stop.
When you come back with this, can you have a graphic that has just the roundabouts and, and the, I'm sorry, that has just the bike pedestrian path and the three places where you have to cross at grade?
I have that on my presentation.
Okay. But I, if you can, can, is that something you can incorporate in yours also?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't need it right now.
Let me, let me clarify. You only want shown the, where the bike crosses and the bike path itself? And none of the roadway features?
Well-
I'm sorry?
It's just, I'm trying to simplify it and kind of just get down to the bike PED crossing and the three places where it crosses at grade.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I'd kind of like to see at some point in time. John says he has that. Is that something you can do easily, or is that a-
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Heidi, if you could plug-
Yeah.
Plug in, unplug your computer and plug into the table that's behind this plant. Plug in mine. Okay, now, I think that this one differs a little bit from, from yours, and Heidi, and I'm sure you can, you can correct.
It looks pretty, it looks pretty similar.
So this is the design, and as Heidi mentioned, the green shows the existing pedestrian-bicycle trail, and my goal is-
Bay Trail, right?
Bay Trail, yes. And my goal is to come up with, or to get us to a design that gets pedestrians, bicyclists, and people in wheelchairs safely to the Bay Trail, which I think is a great resource. The red shows the, the proposed trail for pedestrians, bicycles, and wheelchairs. This is a Caltrans deputy directive regarding that access. The department fully considers the needs of non-motorized travelers, including pedestrians, bicyclists, and persons with disabilities in all construction. This includes incorporation of the best available standards, while we only need to look a mile away for the best standards. And that's this. This is the standard. This is the bridge at University Avenue. It has a separate pedestrian area, and it has a separate bicycle area. The proposal that's part of this, this package has just this. So you're expecting pedestrians to be in this area. You don't have a separate area for pedestrians and people with wheelchairs. This is an aerial view of the Ashby interchange. It's looking from essentially the south-
No, that looks like University.
No, this is, this is, oh, I'm sorry. This is, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm one, one slide ahead. So not only do we have the access on the bridge of having bicycles and pedestrians, but this provides, oops. Okay. Let's go back. This provides access from here across the freeway, all the way to the Bay Trail. No at-grade crossings. That is the standard. This is what we should be striving for. We're back to the, the proposed design, and now I'm going to highlight, Dick, this area that you asked about. So here you have pedestrians crossing five lanes of traffic. From the east, you cross two here, three, four, five. Okay, now, let's look at, up at the Bay Trail. Three additional lanes for pedestrians to cross. This is not the standard. The standard is, what is that, University Avenue? Okay, this is the, the Ashby interchange, and now we're going to zoom in. Up at the top is Aquatic Park. Okay, now, we've zoomed in a little bit more. Now, what I'd like to show you is what I think is the standard for Ashby. Now, this is obviously not what a bridge would look like, but what this is, is a ramp up on Lacoste, crossing the off-ramp, the freeway, the on-ramp, and the Frontage Road. And it deposits a person right next to the Bay Trail. That's the standard that we should be striving for. Now, the one thing that this involves is money, and we should be debating whether we should spend the money for this, but what is proposed is simply not acceptable. Now, the one other thing that has to be done is that room has to be made for that ramp on the west side. And so what I propose is moving that Frontage Road 30 or 40 feet to the east. That's it.
Thanks. Ken?
Yeah, I would say, I would agree, I would agree with Councilmember Fricki. It's been very frustrating getting input into this process with this design for many years, and I don't really want to go over that history, but, you know, we're moving into a situation where we want to have improved pedestrian and bike facilities. We're trying to get people out of their cars. We're looking into the 21st century, and we should have a safe crossing and the same, similar standard that we see in Berkeley. So how do we include that in the design consideration and decide if, how much extra it would cost and whether or not we could pay for it and then have it included with this?
I'd like to interject. I think that what we did last council meeting in authorizing us to get requests, statements of qualifications from various engineering firms, to look at two bridge crossings that are in the report presented by Councilman Fricki. One is the crossing at Powell Street just east of I-80. The other is a bike PED crossing as part of the Ashby-Shellmount interchange improvements. We plan to go forward with that at the same time as Heidi is taking our project forward with the approved conceptual design of the roundabout with its bike PED improvements. That will prepare us for focusing solely on the feasibility and cost impacts of providing some version of the bike PED crossing suggested by Councilman Fricki. One of the, one of the requirements that both the CMA and Caltrans have is that if an improvement, if a transportation improvement is, meets the standards and requirements of Caltrans as to feasibility and- meets the standards and requirements of Caltrans as to feasibility and cost, then that is an acceptable substitute for what they are approving. If however, an alternative is proposed which proposes perhaps a higher level of improvement, but goes beyond that which Caltrans would provide, the city is responsible for bearing the extra cost for that improvement. So, by providing, looking into the feasibility of, of the proposals by Councilman Fricki through a separate contract, we are, we would be prepared for opening the public hearings that are part of this phase of the work towards the end of the project and having the, these alternative improvements evaluated by Caltrans and through our consultant probably and determining whether they should be part of the Caltrans improvements or whether they should be part of separate city improvements. And one other factor that is, is going to be important in this is the estimated improvements that you've seen shown in the roundabout are estimated to be about thirty million dollars, today's money. By the time we go through this project, by the time, if we are successful in this phase of the work and proceed with, um, design drawings of, of the project, the improvements are going to be even more expensive. We know that. And the prospect of receiving thirty million dollars in, uh, transportation funds for doing our project is quite unlikely. Therefore, and we have discussed this with Caltrans, because they are concerned about when the money will be available and what the funding will be for the, for the roundabout improvements when we're ready to build them. So, one of the parts, a very important part of the scope of work is to see how the improvements can be built in phases, which would mean that certain movements would be delayed until we and, and whatever funding, outside state funding is available to build them. And we're gonna have a hard time matching the funds that we get from Caltrans in order to proceed, even on a phase-by-phase basis. And we will have it in the traffic impact survey that we're doing and, and in the revised traffic impact fees. But this is a very, very expensive project. And Caltrans wants to make sure that we are able to provide these improvements and, and meet the requirements for their being able to carry the traffic projected at 2030. So, this is a very massive project. And if we, so, we are allowing for, for additional public input. That needs to come when the public hearings are held. There'll be public hearings for both Berkeley and Emeryville. We're going forward with a project that is, has been endorsed by the city of Berkeley. They, they did not endorse the Alternative Two project. They're very concerned about backing up of traffic on their local streets. And, uh, this is the only way we can go forward at this time. If we were to inject at this point in time, before we've gotten through this phase, another, um, alternative to what we've shown here, it's gonna stop the whole process. It will not go forward.
You know, for a number of years, I've been trying to have input on the pedestrian bike improvements to this intersection. Here we have a situation where the city of Emeryville has paid for all of these designs that are Caltrans designs. The city of Emeryville has paid for these designs and yet we haven't been able to get the same consideration for the pedestrian bike improvements as we have for the vehicular improvements. I remember this coming to a transportation committee years ago where we voted to make sure that the pedestrian bike improvements would be carried out at the same time. And just by your very description here, it's very unlikely we're gonna get the funding, we're gonna tie up the project. There's all these obstacles to getting the pedestrian bike improvements while trying to move ahead with the rest of it. I think all these improvements deserve the same consideration. They should've been looked at a long time ago. Why do we have to wait to the very end of the process where we have a public hearing and the bike lobby comes in and then now you gotta change the design again? Or are you suggesting that you don't change the design again and go forward with it and fund the pedestrian bike improvements who knows when? I mean, you know, I, I've been, I've been asking you for information about this project for years. I've been cut out of meetings. I've been, all kinds of stuff's been going on behind the scenes with this project. And, and the only objective here is to try to get the same quality pedestrian bike improvements as we're trying to accomplish with the vehicular improvements. It's not safe for people to be walking across off-ramps, four, five different off-ramps, trying to get across from the Bay Trail to Shelmaun. That's not acceptable. I totally agree with John Fricki on this project. And how do we get these improvements? If we have to fund them extra, so be it. But I think they're that important. The Ashby interchange is of paramount importance to the city, to the people in this region and it's had very little public exposure and, and here we are ready to move forward. I mean, so, you know.
We are, we are following a process that gets a project approved. If we, if we were to do anything else but we have, but what we have done, we would not be where we are today. The, the Caltrans does not open this to public hearings and public input until they have made absolutely sure that the, the projects, both Alternative Two and, and the Roundabout interchange, meet their criteria and their requirements.
Do you know, when we did the improvements at I-80, Caltrans had all kinds of meetings across town at Pacific Park Plaza and everywhere else, showing what the improvements are, describing the environmental review process. But yet this project's been handled totally differently. So now you have a different process for Caltrans than you had for the, the Powell Street improvements. I mean, I think you've been dictating what Caltrans policy's gonna be and that's the way I feel about it and it's been going on for a long time. I think it's time that we start looking at these improvements together so that they benefit everybody and, and move forward with the most, the best possible design. We're gonna have to live with this for a long time to come. We have a lot of people that wanna walk and ride their bike. We want a pedestrian-friendly city and this is where we start. We don't start by putting them in sometime later or at the tail end of the process or whenever you wanna put them in.
I don't think you're giving a fair hearing to this.
I'm sorry.
Heidi, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Uh, can you give us examples where there's pedestrian crossings over freeway on and off ramps?
Oh, many.
Where they, where they currently exist.
Oh, many. Any, let's see. Do you know the 580 corridor at all in Dublin? Every single partial cloverleaf, you have to cross a loop ramp. And it's an entrance ramp.
Uh-huh.
They're, they're actually more dangerous than a signal or a roundabout crossing. So, there are many loop off-ramps, the same instance would apply. I believe at Bailey Road in Route Four, that condition exists.
I don't see many pedestrians walking in Dublin.
Yeah, it's not the pedestrian bike friendly city, it's. I mean, if you just look at the, what John showed you about what they have in Berkeley and what we're gonna get, I mean, can you even make that comparison? I mean.
Well, but, I mean, look, that, that wasn't part of a, a pedestrian and vehicle plan. That's solely a pedestrian bike overcrossing. It's a unique thing. We're, you know, we're trying to incorporate both things here and probably neither of them are totally satisfactory. But it's really, talk about apples and oranges, this is, this is it. So, if you want a separate dedicated pedestrian bike overcrossing, that, that's a different animal. So, Hank, here, here's a question, or Heidi, maybe you know. Is it, I mean, what would be interesting and where, you know, you said we're gonna cost out John's ideas for separate bike pedestrian overcrossing. Would we be able to, through this process that's going on, to just cost out the bike pedestrian part of, of this plan as it currently exists?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, would, okay, so let me, let me go back a little further in my questions. Is there a normal percentage of what Caltrans puts into a project compared to what the local agency is supposed to stick in? I mean, let's just assume we're still at that thirty million dollars or even call it thirty-five million by the time it gets built. What, what would realistically they be looking at us to pony up? Ten percent?
First of all, I think you have to look at the nature of the transportation funding that's coming down the line. Most of that money is going to mainline improvements. Mainline being the freeway improvements that are going to improve capacity, safety and those kinds of things. We have incorporated as many mainline improvements as we can find and we're looking for more to, to, to rise in the ratings because in the end, it's all a competitive thing.
Right.
And we will be competing against Oakland, Dublin, wherever there are possibilities of getting transportation funding and, and working with the CMA to do that.
So, there's no set rule?
There's, 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 there's really no set rule. I think that the improvements that we're looking at here are normally classified as local improvements.
Yeah.
Even though we have unsatisfactory access and egress as it relates to the freeway. They are, the, the biggest portion of the project cost is for local access, to improve local access. And we, part of this, part of this work that we're going to be doing is to looking, to look at other things that we can do.
So, what I understand, let me, let me stick with this a second. I'm not done. So, the, what I'm hearing is, is that as this stands, we would be expected to fund some portion of this as it is.
Yes.
And, and if we went for a freestanding, I mean, let's say we backed out the bike pedestrian part of this, whatever the savings are from that and said, "We want a freestanding, separate one like we were just looking at", we would be expected to, other than getting some grant funding, we'd be expected to fund that virtually on our own?
Yes.
Okay. So, I, I guess, right now, I, I almost hate to prejudge this, but just looking at the geography of the area, if, if, if what we're trying to do is create a separate one, I would probably prefer that it not be at Ashby-Shelmaun. Because frankly, I mean, it's difficult for people in wheelchairs, so, and, and I recognize that. But there's a very good, the very good crossing at University Avenue, on our side of University Avenue. I'd rather see a crossing closer to, to Powell Street that could then pick up the people that are coming over the bike ped overcrossing that we're gonna do into Bay Street. So, you know, I don't think we're gonna be able to, I know John, when he did his proposal, had more than one crossing over the freeway as an idea. I think we'll be lucky if we can ever get one. And I think we oughta figure out where the place is that's best to do that and, and maybe that's part of what this idea is, I guess, is gonna look at.
The problem there is that Caltrans has to take into consideration, you can't just pull this bike ped improvements out of this interchange and just build the interchange for the vehicles and build something else somewhere else, I don't think.
You think, you think we would lose points with the higher?
It's not a transportation project. You'd, you'd be dealing with bike funds and so forth. Berkeley, when they built the bike ped overcrossing in University, there was no Caltrans transportation funds in there. They, they, there was city money, there was a million dollars that we transferred from, we had a grant for the tunnel under the freeway. And in order for that not to go to waste, since the, the opinion of the citizenry was that it shouldn't go forward, we went to Berkeley and said, you know, "We recommend that Berkeley receive our million dollars."
Right, right, 'cause we weren't ready. Well, so what I'm saying is, let's just take a number and I'm just pulling this out of there. Let's just say that we're expected to come up with twenty percent of this and it's thirty-five million. So, that's seven million dollars that the city would have to try to come up with to, to make this thing happen.
No, it'll take more.
Pardon?
It'll take more.
Okay, let's say ten million dollars more, 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 more. Okay, let's just take a number, ten million dollars. And, and so part of what we're funding in this is, is a bike pedestrian infrastructure that, that looks dubious, to say the least, with all these crossings that you have to do. I mean, three times, you've gotta cross at pretty tough situations. So, I'd rather, if you back the money out of this and do it separate, why is that not okay with Caltrans? If we go about the business of, of trying to fund that in some other location, either near this or closer to, closer to Powell Street?
If I may quickly, Hank, as Councilman Fricki mentioned, you have to provide for non-motorized transportation. So, at a minimum, we would need to provide the shoulder for bikes to ride on, the Class Two, and a sidewalk on one side of the interchange.
That's just a given.
What you do is you designate, what I'm suggesting, you would designate that as pursuant to this requirement. Simple as that. I mean, the distance.
You're saying do the minimum you need to to satisfy Caltrans and then build a separate structure?
No, Caltrans has a directive to provide this access.
Right.
And you simply say in the environmental documents and wherever that this bridge that I'm proposing satisfies that requirement.
Oh, I see. So, so you're.
So, there's no access at all next to the bridge, you know, with a separator or with a bike lane. There's not, that, it's just like on University Avenue. You don't see pedestrians on University, crossing the freeway on University Avenue. It's prohibited because they have the bridge there.
But what Hank seems to be saying is he does not think that, that Caltrans will approve the overcrossing that we're trying to get done for, for vehicles if we yank the pedestrian part out of it.
That is correct.
That is, we, we, this, any project has to go forward to the California Transportation Commission and get approved. And Caltrans will not be permitted to go forward with interchange improvements, funding interchange improvements unless the city is there at the same time and has the money and is guaranteeing to go make that a part of these improvements.
And, and both cities have to be in agreement actually because of properties in both cities.
Well, they're, yeah.
But, but, but hold on a sec. Heidi, what you're, what you're seeing here is kind of many years of pent-up discussion waiting to happen. So, I, I beg the public's indulgence in this because this is the first airing that we've had to really talk about some, some thorny issues. What I wanted to say is that, I talked to CMA staff about this project because of course, they're contributing half a million dollars into preparation of this document. And when we gave back CMA money recently on another project, we had a discussion about if in fact CMA could give more at another point into this project. And while not a done deal, you know, he was positive about the possibility that this interchange would qualify well for other CMA appropriations. So, I think we can start looking at broader funding sources than just relying on Caltrans, you know, even primarily to, to, to fund this. So, I just wanna let everybody know that, you know, I think CMA is an open and willing partner in this project as evidenced by their willingness to contribute money. And, and I also think ACTIA is another source to, to draw upon. And we, I mean, the point is, is this is a, this isn't just a local facility. This is a regional facility and we've got regional bodies that can contribute to this and I think they will. So, and especially if we make formal requests of them to do so. So, CMA also said that at this environment, after this environmental document is released to the public, then design changes can be considered at that time. And I gave him a heads up that we're concerned about the non-vehicular aspects of this design. And he said, "Oh, absolutely. Just as your staff report wrote, you know, you wrote in your staff report, design changes can be considered at that time." So, and, and Heidi, you reaffirm that. So, the point is, is, is our task in the redevelopment agency is are we gonna appropriate twenty thousand dollars towards preparation of this document? That's our, that's our decision tonight.
Mira, if I could, Mira, can.
If I could, Mirat, you're exactly right. That is what we're deciding on tonight, whether we can release this $20,000. If I could correct Councilmember Bukowski, the city has really not put most of the funds into these designs. It has been the CMA, it's closer to $800,000 total that the CMA has backed the city on this. So, what we're looking at here is $20,000 to keep our marker in the game, to move this forward, to really, we've, we've had a lot of venting tonight, there's been a lot of very good ideas and suggestions, primarily focused around the safety of the bikes and the peds and the handicapped. But I, I think it's time to understand that this is a decision point, that we should move forward, and that there is going to be ample opportunity for Mr. Frickie, one would hope, to show his slideshow at these public meetings. I repeat, I would approve the resolution, move the resolution for $20,000.
Now, I have a question. I remember lots of different times when the City Council or Redevelopment Agency appropriated money to study this Caltrans design. Well, do we, do we get anything back for that? I mean, we put a lot of extra stuff in here for a regional project. Are we getting credit for that, or any consideration for that, or anything at all?
Well, Ken, let me just butt in there for a second, to maybe respond to that a bit. Caltrans could give, in my belief, two hoots about fixing the Ashby interchange. I mean, we need that, we need that dramatically to relieve the Powell Christie mess. I mean, this, this is, this is our deal, this is something we need. Berkeley doesn't really seem like they care two hoots about it one way or another.
And Caltrans doesn't.
I mean, and they don't care. We're the moving parties here. And, and you know, your argument is, is that we're moving forward primarily with the vehicle part of it and haven't given the same consideration to bikes. Well, that's, that's a point you can make. But, but we're the ones trying to, trying to, trying to fix this mess at Powell Street, and this is a lot of the answer to that. So, it is a critical project.
And we're the ones that are not considering appropriate pedestrian bicycle access. Why do you want to move forward with something that's unacceptable? I mean, that's what it comes down to.
Let me just say that, that I'm convinced that we can make design changes that would, that would improve what Heidi has shown us tonight.
But, but the staff reports only allows for fine tuning. That's what it says, fine tuning.
I've had conversations with CMA.
Well, I'm just looking at what's in print, what's in writing.
Right, and Nora also read you other things.
May result in some additions and modifications to the design.
Some additions and modifications to this fundamental design, which requires pedestrians to cross five lanes of traffic.
It may result, it may not even happen.
Exactly. This is a referendum on this design. I see it as a referendum, and this is my first opportunity to weigh in on that referendum. And for me, it's a very clear decision, very clear decision. Why is it that we don't have other alternatives? I mean, it's, and Hank Van Dyke keeps saying, "Well, there's going to be public hearings." This is a public hearing, this is a public hearing, and I am voicing what I think many members of the public would find unacceptable.
Nora has a motion to, okay.
Call the question.
Please call the roll on this.
Well, it's a decision, I mean, we can go forward with it, but how do we get these things looking?
I'd like to call the question.
Right, call a question, all right, fine, call a question.
I think we can make changes.
So, this is on the agency item? Agency member Bukowski?
No.
Davis?
Aye.
Cassis?
Aye.
Frickie?
No.
And Chairperson Atkins?
I'm voting yes with, and I'd like the public, my comment to reflect that I'm voting yes because I understand that design changes can be made that can improve the bike and ped issues that we've raised tonight. There's a concurrent council item.
I'd move that resolution.
There are two resolutions there. Is that for both?
Say it again?
There are two resolutions on the City Council's agenda on this item.
I'd move both of them.
My second's for both.
Thank you.
Okay, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bukowski?
No.
Councilmember Dave, oh, sorry, Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Frickie?
No.
Vice Mayor Cassis?
Aye.
Mayor Atkins?
I, again, with the same caveat that I, in conversations I've had with CMA, I think that design changes and improvements can be made to what we've seen tonight.
And Mayor, just before we leave, I want to say one thing. As we study the other alternatives that John came up with here, you know, I, I mean, I'm still interested in something further south, and part of the reason for that is because we've got this ridiculous end of the Bay Trail where it is. And I'm wondering if there's not some Bay Trail funds, if we could connect this into a better southern crossing than at Ashby. So, what my vote might end up being at some point in time is that I want to do the minimum required to, for bike pedestrian at the Ashby interchange, just to get by Caltrans and get the darn thing built, with the idea that we would push as much money as we can towards a real separate bike pedestrian overcrossing closer to Powell Street. I'm not sure that's where I'm going to end up, but that's sort of my thinking right now.
Okay, Communications and Reports Department Heads. Agency Mo, oh, Hank.
I'd like to announce that one of our longtime employees, John Dixon, is retiring on June 30th. We're going to have a party in his honor on June 30th at lunchtime in the garden level and the council, and public or city employees are invited. One more, one more comment, and that is, this Friday, we will be submitting an application to MTC under their Transportation for Livable Communities for the South Bayfront Bike Ped Overcrossing. We are, we have met with MTC, we feel encouraged by their reaction to the project, and we are going after $3 million.
That's good, all right. Other department heads, agency members. Redevelopment meetings adjourned, and the City Council meeting is still open, we're all still here. No special orders of the day, any citizens to be heard? Okay, is there a motion on the, oh, City Managers' report, sorry.
Let me be fairly brief. The summer season is upon us, and the Recreation Department has started their program, will start their program this upcoming Monday for our youth in Emeryville and at the Recreation Center and at the Child Development Center. Also, the pool has been open for some time, but just for anyone that wants to use the pool, there's lessons in the morning, and open swim in the afternoon, senior water aerobics on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and lap swimming in the evening. And if, actually, there's a lot more that happens if anybody wants to look at in the Community Services Department's Summer Activity Guide.
John, what does it cost to use the pool?
Fairly inexpensive, and it's different for different ones. So, their aerobics do cost, I think, around $20, $25 for a session. And I think, if anyone knows here, a dollar or a dollar a day for a youth to come in, swim in the afternoon.
Thank you.
As Councilmember Cassis mentioned, we will not be having our next regular meeting on July 4th, that's our normal retreat. And I just wanted to mention that we will be awarding a contract, and I want to make sure council's okay with that, because we're out to bid, and this contract will be to repair and replace the boiler at the senior center. It went out not so long ago, and we want to get it repaired before the winter starts again. So, if there's, hopefully, no, council doesn't have a problem with us doing that without coming formally before you and waiting until July 18th.
So, you just come back afterwards for the approval of what we've done?
Correct.
It's fine with me.
And is that over $15,000 of expense?
Oh, yes, it'll probably, I think, estimate it at $60,000.
Oh, my, okay.
And the last item that I have is actually, our next meeting will be July 18th. We will have a study session on the Park Avenue District and the report back from Tofer Delaney, I believe is her name. And also, there'll be appointment of two vacant Planning Commission members who are not seeking to be reappointed. So, we have open enrollment for, and are looking for applications for many Emeryville residents or business persons that would like to serve on the Planning Commission. That's my report.
John, do you remember what the deadline is for those?
Yeah, I think you wrote the 17th or something?
It's actually fair, it's up almost to the end of the meeting. We are willing to accept it up until that Monday before the 18th, the 17th of July.
I'd move the consent calendar.
Second.
I'm gonna, I want to pull, let's see, where is it? I want to pull X.
X.
Anybody else want to pull anything?
V as in Victor.
X is rude.
I think this sets a new record since I've been on the council, three and a half pages of consent calendar. I don't remember one quite so long.
Okay, what else you got?
All right, that's it. Is there a second on the rest of the?
Yes.
Okay. Any objections? Okay, the rest of that. I just, okay, V is first.
Okay, I'm simply using this as an opportunity to beat my drum that I think that the traffic signals in the city are not pedestrian-friendly because the walk sign does not come on as a default. And that's my drum beating.
Move the resolution.
Second.
I'd like the minutes to reflect that, please.
Are you voting no on this contract?
No, I'm voting yes, but I'd like the minutes to reflect the reason why I pulled it.
Okay. And I, I'm pulling X kind of on a principle thing, which is that this street sweeping company has decreased its wages, according to the staff report, to below non-pervailing wage, and I have an issue with that. So, I'm going to register that with a no vote. And also, I'm also concerned that every year when this contract comes up for renewal, we never get any other bids. And I'm concerned that Emeryville doesn't seem to be an attractive business for one of these companies to respond to, and that we keep going with the, with the same company who seems to have cheapened their, their pay scale. So, those are my comments.
You mean that they've decreased wages at this company?
Yes, as they, they, the, the contract amount has actually decreased over time because they've, they've, don't pay prevailing wage anymore.
They got Ken's vote.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm going to vote no on that.
I didn't, I didn't have any to do with it.
What is the result of not having someone to clean your streets?
Well, I'd like to go back to the prevailing issues just briefly. There was an action several years ago to require prevailing wages of street sweeping operation, and it went through the courts, and it was found, it was removed from the state's requirements that they pay prevailing wages. And on the, on the basis of many cities protesting that, and so, it's not the street sweeper company that activated, made this change on their own. We requested consideration of the fact that they were no longer required to pay prevailing wages.
Thank you for asking that of them. I'm still concerned nonetheless, but, so is there a motion on this resolution?
I'd move the resolution because the alternative is that we have no one clean our streets. That would get us into trouble with stuff going into the bay, plus an outrage citizenry. I'd move the resolution.
Okay. Are you voting no on that?
I'm voting no.
Okay, so I think, you got three votes?
Yes.
Okay, three to two there. And this takes us to-
We have a real call vote on that, please, Mayor Atkins.
Okay, I thought I delineated that, but, okay.
Councilmember Bukowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Frickie?
No.
Vice Mayor Cassis?
Aye.
Mayor Atkins?
No. Okay, this takes us to, I think this was, I saw, I mean, one other, one other council agenda since I've been in office that went into the double letters in its length, and it was also the last meeting in June before the July 4th recess. So, congratulations, staff, on packing a bunch in here on the consent calendar. We have three public hearings tonight. The first is a resolution of the City Council granting DPR a waiver from the noise ordinance for another concrete pour for Emery Station East. Miru?
Good evening, Mayor Atkins and council members. As you may recall, on May 2nd, the council approved three overnight cement pours for Emery Station East. On the May 30th, the council then considered a request from the applicant to eliminate a condition of approval which required elimination, disarming of the backup alarm systems. At that time, the council approved this change in condition, but rescinded the approval for the third pour in order to assess the success of the proposed mitigation measures. The two pours have now occurred, the first one occurred on June 2nd and 3rd, and the second one occurred this past Friday and Saturday. Staff, including the Police Department, has received no complaints for both the pours. With this results that have come in, the staff is recommending approval for the third concrete pour, and the Dutch resolution has the same conditions that were placed on the applicant at the May 30th meeting. The third pour is scheduled for this coming Friday and Saturday. The staff report and the approval gives a little bit of a leeway from June 23rd to July 8th, just in case there are some issues with, any problems that the applicant might have in scheduling. But at this point, it is scheduled for this Friday and Saturday. So, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I'll open the public hearing. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this? Or DPR?
If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any.
I understand there wasn't a single complaint received for the other, for the other pour.
Yeah, that's our understanding as well. We did the measures that we said we would, and it seemed to, seemed to have worked.
Thank you.
Good.
Yes, I will. Thank you very much for your consideration.
I also want to say, just even apart from the work at night, the organization there to get traffic through, a very difficult site, is excellent. I've really not seen very many situations where the flag folks that are out there really seem not just hanging out, they're really doing their job, and I appreciate it, making an effort to go through there, to see a number of times, and it's very well organized.
Thanks a lot for saying that, I'll convey it to my staff, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it was well organized. I was surprised to find 59 Street closed, I mean, I didn't give it any consideration, but when it went that way, it was closed, it's okay, it was, you know, it was well lit, and everybody was out there doing their job. But, so, thank you.
Good. If there's no members of the public wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing.
Move approval to waiver.
Atkins?
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Bukowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Frickie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cassis?
Aye.
Mayor Atkins?
Aye. This takes us to the second public hearing, which is amending the municipal code concerning compact parking spaces. Charlie, oh, Diana?
Oh, yes, Diana Kena will make the staff presentation on this.
Good evening, council members. On April 18th, the City Council initiated a zoning ordinance amendment, reducing the allowable percentage of compact parking spaces from 60% to 20% in new construction, in new projects. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on April 27th, and the speaker said that as gas prices go up, the number of compact spaces could go up, and the proposed amendment would make garages larger. Commissioners said the proposal needed to be looked at as part of a larger parking study, and the percentage should not be reduced down to 20%. The item died for lack of a motion, but it, you can still approve it even without their motion. The changes would be to Section 94552D for non-residential projects and Section 94553A2D for residential projects of the zoning ordinance. The amendment is exempt from environmental review because it can be seen with certainty there's no possibility it might have a significant effect on the environment. Staff has received emails from three developers, and they're on the dais, and I want to briefly summarize them. Mike Kim of BRE asks that the change be analyzed in context of impacts to new development, long-term livability, and conformance to the general plan. Rich Robbins and George, Jeff Sears of Wareham asked that the change be considered as part of the general plan update, along with number of spaces per square foot, unbundling of parking and relationships to transit, and they pointed out that the city can require a different percentage case by case, as they did with their recent project. They request that the council, if the council is intent on lowering the percentage, that they would argue for 40%, which they say is closer to the percentage- that they would argue for forty percent, which they say is closer to the percentage used by surrounding cities. They say the proposed standard would pose, pose a problem given the energy crisis, the cost of parking structures, slow progress on the general plan, and lack of public parking.
If I can also add, there was a letter that was received late this afternoon from the chamber that was placed on your dais.
The chamber?
That basically said that, and on June sixth, the unanimous decision, the board of the chamber, um, believed that this matter should be integrated into the general plan task force deliberations.
That's right.
Can I, you, say something here?
Okay. And Mike Kovarubius of TMG requests time to present impacts on their projects, and says the proposed organ, ordinance could require removable, removal of parking as the marketplace redevelops, and cause a parking shortfall, or increase the sizes of the new garages. He mentioned solutions addressing stall dimensions, aisle width, and turning radii, and says they plan to change their compact spaces from seven and a half feet wide to eight feet wide, and suggests that the city asks developers to provide data on impacts. And I'd like to give you a little information that I dug up today. Reducing the allowable percentage that can be compact spaces to twenty percent would reduce project size or increase garage size about seven percent. Reducing it to forty percent would reduce project size or increase garage size about three and a half percent. General plan goal three is to establish a circulation system for free movement of persons and goods while avoiding over accommodation of vehicles at the expense of land use, so it's a balancing act. And whether reduced percentage is over accommodation depends partly on how many compact cars there are. Compact car sales were twenty-five percent in two thousand two and fifteen percent in two thousand five, could increase as fuel prices go up. Surrounding cities requirements vary. Oakland allows thirty-three percent compact spaces. Berkeley generally prohibits them but allows a few case by case. Alameda allows fifty percent. Albany allows twenty-five percent, and San Francisco does not allow any compact spaces. If you average all five cities together, you get twenty-two percent. Berkeley requires standard spaces to be eight feet wide instead of eight and a half, which was interesting, 'cause it was similar to something that was in the TM, uh, one of the letters.
Wait, just clarify, Berkeley's definition of a, of a regular parking stall is eight feet wide?
Right.
TMG's revised internal definition for compact space is eight feet wide?
Right.
Okay, does one need to clarify about that?
So that's consistent with Berkeley not allowing compact spaces, because their regular space is already smaller. San Francisco, instead of listing, naming dimensions, requires each space to be two-hundred-and-sixty square feet, and then the people can decide how they're shaped, which gives you flexibility to deal with different sites. And another piece of information is that staff is planning to hold a city council study session on parking, um, in general, on August first. So that concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I just have some comments. Well, as a person that initiated this, I, I wanna make it clear that the reason for the initiation of this idea is because existing compact spaces are too small, they're a health hazard, they cause problems, there's no enforcement as far as who's gonna park there and who isn't, or whether or not somebody has to take two spaces or not. It really was not introduced for the question of the parking requirement or anything else. But compact spaces were created so that developers could meet parking requirements, and because of that, we gotta cram everybody into these little spaces just to meet parking requirements. I would rather relax the parking requirement for every project where, um, there would be a problem, so if you're gonna eliminate compact spaces altogether, then you could adjust down the parking requirement for that project, and therefore, nobody has to be, uh, no impact to development would occur. You would just have standard spaces that people, everyone could get in and out of safely, and, and, and then we would have, um, more uniform parking with people not parking in two spaces, et cetera. So that was the reason it was introduced. I mean, the idea of having any compact spaces, in my opinion, is unacceptable, 'cause they're not, it's just not a good idea. And there are some cities that have repealed, um, compact parking spaces, probably for that reason, and so that's the direction that I would seek for us to approve.
If I may just ask for clarification, I, if I heard you correctly, Councilmember Bukowski, I think you said that elimination of compact spaces would be in conjunction with reducing the number of spa, overall spaces required?
Well, in order for there not to be an impact to development, then you would have to make the corresponding adjustment, just like we, you did when you created the compact spaces, you said, well gee, instead of having fifty spaces, now you can have sixty-five because they're a lot smaller, you would have to go make the adjustment backwards, except you'd have to, um, reduce the requirement so that it wouldn't impact the project.
All right, well, the ordinance that's before you tonight that we prepared at your direction simply reduces the compact ratio from sixty percent to twenty percent, it does not make any adjustments to the parking requirements.
Okay, how did we get to twenty percent? Because the planning commission didn't make any recommendations, so-
That's, that's what we decided in council.
That was the direction from council.
All right, all right, okay, thank you.
I think that, uh, Councilmember Bukowski is right, it doesn't make any sense to have different, spaces of different sizes, because it's a fun, it's a, it's a, it's one parking lot, or one parking garage, and when you buy a car, uh, you, you, your, your car does not come with a designation, this car is a compact car, I mean, some-
Actually, they do.
Well, it's-
And subcompact cars.
Some, yeah, I, I don't know whether the buyer is aware that they're not driving a compact car, and they, they are not, because they're parking in the compact space, and so, what kind, I mean, uh, compact car, non-compact cars park in the compact spaces, and so what do you do? Do you ticket them? I mean, it makes no sense.
There's different standards in every city for compact spaces, too, so how are you supposed to know what you're calling for?
Well, it's as if they're all, we are all, we're all, we're dealing with all these different auto industries, I mean, we have one auto industry, and we have, we have all these different regulations in all these different cities. So I don't see what the rationale, I wasn't, the, the twenty percent figure was arrived at, um, at a special meeting, I forgot when it was, I wasn't here.
This council, maybe?
And I don't see what the rationale is for twenty percent. I mean, what is the rationale for twenty percent? It's a bad idea, and twenty percent means that it's just, it's, it's less of a bad idea than the sixty percent. But I agree with Ken, I think that, but I would make it simpler, I think that all minimum parking requirements should be made maximum, simple as that. The minimum becomes a maximum.
Okay, um, procedurally, we, we have a public hearing on the reading of this ordinance, um, in, uh, as Diana mentioned, there are some people who wrote in about various concerns and ramifications of what this would be, and asking that this item be taken into consideration with other items related to parking, um, and there are some people in the development community who wanted to speak tonight, who, who couldn't make it. So, um, procedurally, what I'm gonna do, is I'm gonna open up the public hearing for people here tonight who wanna speak on this issue. I'm not gonna close the public hearing, 'cause I'm gonna continue it to our July meeting, so that it'll give a chance for the people who wanted to speak on this can, can come back in July. So, uh, with that, I'm taking a prerogative, I'll open up the public hearing now. Any members of the public here who wanna speak to this, please come forward.
Hi, uh, good evening, Meeroth, and council members, Bob Cantor with Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. John Flores mentioned the letter you received, unfortunately, just today, I thought we mailed it earlier than that, obviously not, I apologize for the late delivery. It's quite brief. However, I, I, a couple items, we're not sure, um, what, why, the urgency of this matter now, you have a study session, I believe Diana mentioned, coming up in August. The general plan update process seems to be working well. Councilmember Fricki made a good point, I don't know if we know what is or is not a compact car. We know what isn't a compact car, when you see an SUV or a pickup truck parked in a compact car space, that's not a compact car, clearly. But, uh, nonetheless, uh, uh, some of the, um, uh, comments and objections and concerns brought up by some of the email messages are very pertinent. Uh, parking is a big concern, perhaps on a case by case basis, or just one standard space, rather than, I mean, uh, uh, adjusting the, you know, come to compromise between a regular space and compact space and split difference, however, we're not, uh, our, our board studied this quite at length at our last board meeting, and we don't believe this is something of urgency that needs to be introduced as an ordinance this evening. It clearly lends itself to some further study, either at your study session in August, or at, more appropriately, we believe, the general plan update process committee, which we think is working well. Thank you.
I will add to your comments that when I did meet with John Gooding, he indicated that he perfect, he totally, the chamber totally agreed with the idea that spaces are too small, and it's too much difficulty getting in and out, et cetera, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's true, I mean, uh, and, that's true, but we're, the specific issue is that going to the sixty to twenty percent. But, yes, we're concerned with that, too.
Any other members of the public who, yeah, come on up.
I'm Dan McNeven with, um, with TMG Partners, I'm al, I'm also a resident of, of Emeryville, and I'm here for, I'm here really for Mike Kovarubius, who could not attend.
You still in the warehouse?
Huh?
You still in the-
I still am in the warehouse, I'm living, living down the street. And, and I wanna, I wanna echo the, the, the chamber's comments in that, uh, the, the item to us is fairly new, and we haven't had a really, a chance to study it, and I gotta say honestly, I, I don't know whether I support or oppose, uh, the idea of changing these parking ratios. We haven't had a chance to study it, to take a look at our projects and see how it will affect our planning, we're planning two right now, we're planning a housing development, across from the, from the, from the BRE project, and we are planning the redevelopment of, of the, of the marketplace. Marketplace is a, a seven or eight acre property that is crying out for urban revitalization, uh, and, and parking will affect what we can accomplish there, uh, and, and we, we think, we think this issue is appropriate for the city to contend with and to look at, and we also think that we need to be involved in the conversation, because we are a stakeholder, a fairly large stakeholder in the parking issues that face the city. And what we want is for parking to work, to work for our consumers, to work for our residents, those who buy from us, who, who, or who rent from us, to work for the retailers who wanna come into our properties, and there's a balancing and a layering that needs to go into, go, go, go into this to be considered, and I think that there's a value to bringing in the private sector to talk about the, our points of view, so that we can, can really discuss with planning and with staff, uh, and with council, uh, perhaps, you know, appropriate approaches to, uh, to, 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 to the parking, to, to parking challenges. We've developed, I don't know, three or four million feet of, of office space, and, and, and thousands of housing in this throughout the Bay Area, and we've contended with this in other places, successfully in some cases, not successfully in other, in other cases. We wanna be successful here, and we have two projects that are happening now, uh, that, that this could really affect, and so we, we, we request, uh, and I, it sounds like we're heading towards some sort of at least a month delay, but, but time for us to, to study this more carefully, to be involved with the city and with the staff in, in discussing solutions, and then, and working together somehow, find some way to, to have a task force, or to, whether it's a general plan, a task force, or another one, give us an opportunity to be part of the process, so that we can, we can help get to a solution. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has of our projects.
You have a question? If you knew that the elimination of the compact spaces would not affect your project, in other words, if the parking, uh, ratio was adjusted so that it would still conform, would, would you be objective to, uh?
Yeah, I, I, like I say, I don't know that, I don't think, i- if we can make it work, uh, why would we object? We just don't, we don't know yet. I, I, I'm kind of a, kind of a data wonk, I, I like data, I like to study things, and I haven't had a chance to study this issue yet, the, uh, the, the size of the spaces, uh, the, the turning radius, how people use them, it, we, if we have a chance to get our, our arms around it, uh, we're open to any, any reasonable analysis that gets us to the end of the day.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Atkin, uh, is it possible that we could continue this to August first? Did I hear Diana say she was going to, uh, the staff was gonna put on a, a full blast parking study session?
When was the study session planned for, what date?
August first. August first.
Yeah, I, I would share Nora's thoughts, uh, and maybe-
More input on that.
All right, so, um, um, I will, um, amend what I was gonna say, in addition to not taking any action tonight, but just opening the public hearing for people here, uh, I guess it, it won't be on the July eighteenth agenda, but we'll bring it back for the first meeting in August to con, to continue the public hearing.
And then, Mayor, the only, the only question is, then, how we incorporate a public hearing amidst a, a study session, 'cause that's what's planned on the first, is a study session, but I know you wanna give people a chance to do their input, so, I, I'm not sure logistically how to-
This can be an item on the regular council agenda following the study session.
Oh, pretty simple.
Okay, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Atkin, members of council, my name is Mike Kim with BRE Properties. I'd like to just echo what the ref from TMG said, which is, we don't necessarily agree or disagree with the proposal, our concerns are the same that it works, and that, uh, we like to study the impact as it relates to two significant projects that we currently have underway, so, um, I don't wanna take up any more time, I think enough's been said, and it looks like we're going in the right direction. I did prepare a letter to leave with staff that I didn't have chances forward to you earlier, and hopefully it'll get a chance to be circulated.
Thanks, I'll be sure to sign in, too.
I would like to-
Thank you, people, for coming and staying so late.
I would like to ask whether, to the extent that we have a public hearing tonight to, to revise our zoning ordinance, I'm, I'm wondering whether I can-
Hello, are you still open?
Yeah, it's still open. But council members making a comment, so I'll get to Trigvi when he's done.
I'm wondering whether we can revisit this issue of sixty twenty, and what I would propose is eliminating compact spaces, but, like I said, making the, the minimum a ma, a maximum. And the reason that the two are related is the, um, uh, Dan McNeven said that if you have, if you eliminate the percentage of compact spaces, then the total real estate devoted to parking necessarily increases, because those compact spaces are now full-size spaces, but if you eliminate the minimum, then you leave it to the developer to decide, how many spaces do you want? How, you, you, you will, you, the developer knows much better than we do. So, so I'm not sure what, whether that's something that we can do on the first, but that's what I would-
Before we have a conversation, we're still hearing from the public, 'cause I know people are gonna, council's gonna wanna respond to you, so come on up, Trigvi.
Hi, Trigvi Duroshan Avenue. I've seen this happen several times. Let's try to be more clear about the public, um, speaking, um, the public hearing from now on, because it's very confusing to be wanting to say something, not sure if you can get up and say it, and then you haven't heard it closed.
I apologize if I'm not chairing-
Yeah, I've, I've had this happen several times. Okay, um, I just wanna, uh, say that everybody that spoke before, I was in agreement with that, and I was in agreement with what the public, uh, with the planning commission, what they put forth. I'm sure you saw in the paper these small little cars that are starting to be very popular, people are gonna be getting these little things, um, and I wanted to say, you know, I'm sure everybody's had the same problem, you go to regular parking spaces, then you have a big, uh, you know, king cab diesel pickup truck, which are great fun to ride in, but they've taken one and a half spaces no matter what, no matter how big the space is. So I'm saying that whatever you do, you, you're always gonna have problems with parking, so just keep that in consideration, thank you.
Sign in. Trigvi? Let's sign in. Any other members of the public who wish to speak? Okay, so, um, as I indicated, we're not gonna take any action on this tonight, so can we move on, um, and we'll talk about this again in August? Okay.
Well, I, I was going to suggest that we have something to act upon in August, and that is elimination of compact spaces and making the minimum, ma, minimum parking requirement a maximum.
I could agree with eliminating compact spaces and eliminating the minimum, but I don't know about the maximum, making the minimum the maximum, that's one part of it, I would-
And John, your proposal really does, in fact, get to your whole idea of unbundling parking, because you're, you, you would be saying, well, your project won't be impacted by this, because we don't wanna have enough parking spaces for all the units anyway. So that's really all part of this discussion that I see that we're gonna do, so I, I don't, I mean, that, your idea can certainly be one of the ones that we kick around on the first, but I, I don't, I wouldn't support making that the key spot of, of what we're gonna talk around on, on first.
Diana, as you take our, our musings forward for the August study session, ju, just bring in the, add the element of definition of, of a compact space. I mean, if TMG is already going to a different definition and standard than what the city has defined, maybe we need to define it a little bit better, also, so, um, that, and then how it rel, how it interrelates to other factors, I think needs to be spelled out in the, in the parking study session. Charlie?
Um, not to throw yet another dimension on this, but, well, first, I think, if you eliminate the ma, the minimum parking requirement, and leave it to the developers to decide how much parking they're going to provide, then you can eliminate the compact spaces.
Exactly.
Because it doesn't impact, you know, how, how much parking they'll be able to provide, but I also- But I also think if we're going to open this up and make it a broader discussion, we should also examine the dimensional requirements generally in our parking section, the zoning ordinance, because they're really inadequate. The maneuvering aisles are too narrow, turning radiuses at the end of aisles are not mentioned at all, and as we've seen in the base street garages, they don't work.
Right.
I think personally, if you eliminate compact spaces and eliminate the minimum requirement, that parking stalls should be nine feet wide. Anyway, there are a lot of issues to consider here that I think could make for much more efficient parking layouts, and it's been studied extensively by experts, and we have resource materials about this.
Good. I look forward to an updated version. I just want to say, I think the majority of council interest in this subject, whether or not we arrive at a clear resolution to this, is sparked by what we've seen built in town, and...
Yes.
And...
I absolutely agree. Parking, generally speaking, parking in Emeryville does not work.
Exactly.
That's been my experience.
And, you know, my other pet peeve was the Andronico's Lot when that was constructed. That was just a chintzy way around a city parking requirement. So anyway, we can editorialize forever on this, but, and I know council loves to chat about stuff like this, but are there any other elements that you'd like to give staff direction for to come back and incorporate into the study session?
Yes. I wonder, and I don't know how long it was, but when we had the developers come in to the General Plan Update Committee and talk about the cost of parking, I thought that was really an excellent presentation, you know, just, and talking about subterranean parking and the problems that we have associated with that. And I think that's on film, and I don't think that, it's not...
Oh, wait a minute, maybe it is.
Yeah, if, could we look and see, and see how long that particular segment was? Because not all of the council were present for that, and I thought it was really enlightening. Again, it was part of the General Plan Update Committee, one of the regular presentations that we had, where, you know, was it four or five of the developers sat up front of the table and just went right on through and talked about these issues.
We understand what you're asking for.
And maybe it takes too much time, but let's try.
Okay, thank you. We'll talk about this again in August. And just one last request to staff is to let the people who wrote letters but weren't here tonight know when it's coming back to them. Our last public hearing is introduction, first reading of an ordinance on revenue measure only, blah, blah, blah. Do I hear a...
Move to read by title.
Thank you, that's what I was looking for. Is there a second?
Checking.
Anybody opposed? Okay, Michael, could you...
It's a public hearing.
Yes.
No, but they can read.
You have to read it first before we open the public hearing.
Okay. Introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending Section 3-1.104, revenue measure only, does not permit business otherwise prohibited, of Chapter 1 of Title III of the Emeryville Municipal Code, adding Chapter 28 of Title V of the Emeryville, and adding Chapter 28 of Title V of the Emeryville Municipal Code prohibiting the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries in the City of Emeryville, and amending Section 1-201 Subsection E of Chapter 2 of Title 1 of the Emeryville Municipal Code regarding violations.
Hi, Michael.
Good evening, council members.
Thanks for holding out till 10:00 PM.
Thank you. I'm Michael Gena, Deputy City Attorney. In 2004, the City Council enacted a temporary moratorium on the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries in the city. The moratorium was extended twice and is set to expire in August 2006, and no further extensions are permitted. The City Council is therefore asked to consider what sorts of regulations, if any, should be enacted regarding the establishment and operation of medical marijuana dispensaries in the city. An ordinance has been prepared which proposes to prohibit the establishment of any dispensaries in the city. The proposed ordinance would also update provisions of the business license and penalty provisions of the municipal code. For the remainder of my presentation, I'd like to give you a quick update on the state of medical marijuana laws, both in California and on the federal level, and a few important court decisions affecting medical marijuana. And then I'd also like to give you a brief update on how other cities in Calif, cities and counties in California have enacted their own regulations regarding marijuana dispensaries and their experiences with dispensaries in their jurisdictions. So regarding the law, in 1996, the voters, the people of the State of California enacted Prop 215, which allows seriously ill individuals to obtain and use medical marijuana without prosecution under state laws regarding cultivation and possession. Thereafter, in 2003, the state legislature enacted SB 420, which provides for limits on the amounts of medical marijuana which could be cultivated and possessed by the patient and/or his or her caregiver. SB 420 also established a medical marijuana ID program, which was designed to insulate patients and caregivers from arrest for possession and cultivation of medical marijuana under state law. I'll note that neither Prop 215, the Compassionate Use Act, nor SB 420 provided for the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries. That issue, that is the question of dispensaries, was an issue that was left to local jurisdictions to regulate through their police powers. And in fact, SB 420 specifically provides that cities are allowed to enact laws which are consistent with the provisions of SB 420 and Prop 215. Meanwhile, on the federal side, the Controlled Substances Act provides that marijuana is a Schedule I substance, making it illegal to possess, cultivate, use, or distribute marijuana for any purpose. A series of federal court cases has highlighted the conflict between federal and state law. In 2001, the United States Supreme Court in the Oakland Cannabis Buyers Club decision ruled that there was no medical necessity defense for the possession or use of marijuana under the compassion, under the Controlled Substances Act. Thereafter, in 2005, the Supreme Court again ruled in, or ruled in Gonzalez versus Raich that the Commerce Clause does allow Congress to prohibit the cultivation and use of marijuana which would otherwise be allowed under California law. The practical significance of that decision is that federal law enforcement officers may continue to prosecute federal drug laws against Californians who cultivate, distribute, or use medical marijuana which would otherwise be allowed under state law. These federal cases did not explicitly preempt California law or strike down the provisions of SB 420 or Prop 215. However, I will note that because marijuana remains a Schedule I substance, after Gonzalez versus Raich, a dispensary which would ostensibly distribute medical marijuana would remain prohibited under the Controlled Substances Act. Recently, in 2005, a California Court of Appeal held that cooperative medical marijuana distribution and cultivation is not a protected activity under the state provisions SB 420 or Prop 215. The court reasoned that the Compassionate Use Act was designed for individual use and cultivation and not the sort of mass cultivation or distribution to hundreds of patients that was seen in that particular case. So to summarize the status of law, state and federal law regarding marijuana use, marijuana and medical marijuana dispensaries remain illegal under federal law. Under state law, the state allows for the individual patient and/or his or her caregiver to use and cultivate marijuana under specific circumstances. However, the state law does not make any provision for medical marijuana dispensaries, the establishment or operation of those dispensaries. State law also allows local jurisdictions to enact laws that are not in conflict with the provisions of state law. Regarding how other cities have addressed the issue of medical marijuana in their jurisdictions, as part of your staff report, there is a brief summary page which gives you a summary of how different cities have adopted regulations. A lot of cities have adopted moratoria, which is similar to the one that Emeryville currently enjoys, which for a temporary period of time prohibits the establishment of dispensaries. Other cities, such as San Francisco, Berkeley, and Oakland, allow dispensaries to operate pursuant to regulation, usually through their zoning or land use ordinances. And about 22 other cities in California have enacted an outright prohibition on dispensaries similar to the one that's being proposed to you tonight. Those cities that haven't allowed dispensaries to operate in their jurisdictions have sometimes, excuse me, reported adverse secondary effects from the operation of those uses in their cities. Secondary adverse effects can include the odor of marijuana either being grown or processed and traveling outside of the boundaries of the dispensary, a spike in crime, including theft, trespassing, violent encounters between dispensary employees and would-be robbers, making an attractive nuisance of the dispensary parking issues have also been reported, and loitering.
Sounds like alcohol.
Based on, based on the above, then, staff believes that the most appropriate response would be to adopt the proposed ordinance prohibiting the establishment of dispensaries within the city. And this recommendation is based on three main points. Number one, the ability for the city to exercise its police power to regulate the health, welfare, and safety of its citizens and businesses as provided under California law. Number two, the continuing federal prohibition against the use and distribution of marijuana for any purpose. And number three, the secondary adverse effects of dispensaries as reported by other cities. What I'd also like to do is emphasize what this proposed ordinance does not do. The proposed ordinance does not prohibit an individual qualified patient or his or her primary caregiver from cultivating, obtaining, or using medical marijuana for that patient's own individual use. The proposed ordinance does not add or take away from rights which are already authorized by Prop 215 and SB 420. If enacted, the ordinance would simply prohibit the establishment of medical marijuana dispensaries in the city. And as noted above, state law does not provide for the establishment of these dispensaries, while at the same time, federal law prohibits such businesses outright. If, on the other hand, the City Council decides not to prohibit dispensaries in Emeryville, then the council is nevertheless asked to adopt the proposed ordinance while staff drafts regulations for your further consideration. Enacting the ordinance now would allow staff the opportunity to propose new guidelines for the operation and regulation of those dispensaries consistent with your direction. Adopting the proposed ordinance tonight would avoid the situation where you have the establishment of a dispensary after the expiration of our moratorium, but before we can enact new regulations for the regulation of those dispensaries. That's the conclusion of my staff report, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Are there questions at this point from council? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to speak? Public hearing's closed. Okay, council comments, or is there a motion on the...
Well, I maintain that the people in Emeryville supported Proposition 215, and therefore would support the establishment of medical marijuana facilities, so I don't agree with the proposed staff direction.
Mayor Atkins, I think Mr. Gena has done an excellent job on this, and I believe the experience of other cities has been very negative with some of these establishments. We have to remember, we have a police force that right now is very, very thin, and we're having difficulty recruiting police officers. I think the proposal that Mr. Gena has put forward to us is certainly a reasonable one, and I would move the first reading of the ordinance.
I'll second it.
Please call the roll.
Okay, and I just want to comment before we do. You know, I'm being hypocritical here, because philosophically, I think probably drug use ought to be non-criminalized. I think it ought to be legal and eliminate the drug wars, and a certain number of people would be lost to society, just like they are drinking alcohol. But I think the negative side of the drug wars is terrible. So it's hard for me to support this, but I do, because where I'm being hypocritical is, do I want a dispensary in Emeryville? No. Too many problems, so. I know that's inconsistent, but that's the way it is.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Bukowski.
What are we voting on? You reading it by title?
First reading.
Oh, okay, no.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fricki.
Aye.
Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Cassis.
Aye.
And Mayor Atkins. Wait, you forgot Ken.
No, he said no.
Oh, okay. Aye. Thank you. That concludes our public hearings, and we've already dealt with some of these administrative items already. Do I hear a motion on 8A?
Move approval of the resolution.
Second. 8A?
Yeah.
Budget?
Yes, I would like to move an amendment, and that is to provide for eight infant slots at the Child Development Center this fall, September.
Second.
Okay, that's, I guess, a substitute motion, so...
Amendment to the budget.
If I can just add that, that will, that has been a part of the budget, and in your budget packet, it shows that each infant costs the city approximately $30,000, and depending on the fees you charge, it could be city subsidized up to $15,000 or $20,000, which would put, eight times that amount would be approximately $100,000, which would put your expenditures greater than your revenues. I might also say that staff is currently in discussions with Novartis, who has expressed interest in providing or having this Child Development Center provide some childcare and other rooms for childcare for their employees who have recently lost their childcare center where they had a number of children there. My suggestion is that the budget be passed as presented, and that we report back to council, I believe, on July 18th with the status of our discussions with Novartis.
I just want to add that I've been privy to some of the conversations around Novartis, and while it's premature to announce anything before you have it in hand, I think we're going to see significant, very significant input into ACDC from Novartis. So I think we're going to be seeing in a couple of months' time, an infant care program that at least equaled what we had before.
Only for Novartis employees?
No.
No, actually, I don't think so, John, in terms of the discussions that are going on. I think the Head Start Room is going to be reactivated, and the facility will be fully used, and there's some very generous things in the making right now. So there's a substitute motion, but I would...
I would revise my motion to say that if in 30 days, something comes through with Novartis, then obviously, our budget need not be amended. But if not, then I want us to be committed to providing eight infant slots this September. That's my motion.
Yeah, well, you know, it seems to me with all the movement here to try to attract families with children and Community Center of Life and all the things that are doing with the school, it's inconsistent to eliminate the infant care program when you're spending all this money on all these other programs to encourage families. You know, we created the center, the people that use it are the most needy, the people that get these subsidy, working, single parents, and this is not the area to cut funding or reduce funding or not provide funding. I think these are the most necessary, helping these people is paramount importance, should be a top priority for the city. It's been great all these years having the infant care program, and I think we should continue it.
I will reiterate that I think Emeryville families will be well-served, all ages.
I call a question.
Well, that's not something you can vote on now, if you think you're going to be, I mean, that's not something to vote on.
We're voting on John's motion. Please call the roll. Councilmember Bukowski.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
No.
Councilmember Fricki.
Aye.
Council, oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Cassis.
No.
Mayor Atkins. No. Is there a motion on the...
To accept the budget, pass the resolution.
Second.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Bukowski.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Fricki.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cassis.
Aye.
Mayor Atkins. Aye. And again, I'm, just want to reiterate, I think we're going to see a really beefed-up ACDC, and then staff are going to come back to us around the state funding and some of the other things. So there's a lot happening right there with that program right now. We've dealt with B.
Oh, just, I want to raise one other question. One of the other reasons that I'm opposed, that I supported this, is that I don't think any notice went out to the Child Development Center or any of the parents that have children at the facility to make them aware that the council was considering this issue. I would have liked to have had their input on it, and I'm sure they don't even know about it, so that's another reason.
Well, this has been the subject of a whole lot of discussion for several months.
Yes.
If somebody doesn't know that this is being discussed, they're not paying attention.
Somebody that goes to the childcare center knew that the council would be considering the issue?
All right, we're done with this agenda item. This brings us to Communications and Reports Department heads.
Mayor Atkins? I would just like to call to the council's attention an article that appeared in this month's issue of Planning Magazine, which is the American Planning Association's monthly publication. It's called "Water and the Density Debate," and Emeryville is featured prominently in this article. There's a discussion about our stormwater guidelines for green dense redevelopment here.
Great.
The article was authored by our contact person at EPA, and so this has gone out to every APA member in the U.S.
And you're providing us with copies of the article, one would hope?
I can certainly do that. I can email you a link to the article, if you'd like.
Oh, even better.
And some of us would like a copy of the article.
And I can give, well, there's a hard copy.
Any other department heads wanting to say anything? Council members?
I had a couple of items.
Ken?
When are we going to be able to start televising the General Plan Committee meetings? Have we, is that going to happen?
I can respond to that. We have wireless microphones on order. These are, that's what's holding it up, as we, as you know, as we've said repeatedly, we have to have the microphones in place before we can begin televising. We've been working extensively with Second Sight on this. These will be wireless microphones. The microphones apparently are in hand. The transmitter that the wireless microphones need are apparently backordered. They expect them to arrive next week. Unfortunately, the next Steering Committee meeting is next Tuesday. We had hoped to have the microphones in place so that next Tuesday's meeting could be broadcast. At this point, that's looking iffy. We're not sure if the mics will be in place in time for that or not, but they would definitely be in place in time to broadcast the July meeting.
Okay. And then I had, I was going to ask, do you think it's possible that we could put the Planning Commission agendas on the web as well, like we do the City Council and redevelopment committees?
They are on the web.
Not the agendas, the packets, rather, excuse me.
Oh.
I don't think that's that difficult to do. I know that Tom McGurk does it now relatively easily. He has to, I guess, train someone in planning to do that.
Okay.
So let's put that on our agenda.
Okay, I guess I attended an ethics meeting with Councilmember Fricki, and I guess it was kind of the same stuff we've heard for the last, I prefer the last 15 years about the ethics, so, but we met our requirement. And then I attended a League of Cities Dinner this past Thursday, and somebody was there from the governor's office talking about all of the additional funds that are being allocated for housing, how they're going to have a proposal for permanent housing for the homeless. I really haven't seen how that works. And that's about it. Thank you.
John?
The leaf blower ordinance, that was something that I asked for in December, and I think at the time, we were told early spring, and so...
Late summer or midsummer now?
We have a date?
No. No, we don't have a date, but one of the, it's mostly been just the press of other work matters, but that we were trying to coordinate with public work, setting up a stakeholder meeting, which is the direction that was going from council, so we would get the input of both the landscaping community and the large landowners who may be affected. And then, once we had that input, then come back to the council. And I think with the break that we have now, that gives us an opportunity to get that off the ground, so perhaps we could, we could look to doing that in July or August, and then we would be looking at early fall.
Okay, so right now, we're going to get an ordinance in late fall?
Well, not late fall, I think early fall, September.
Okay, so by, by September, we'll have a...
That's certainly what we'll endeavor to do. And again, I think the direction we last got from council was to do the stakeholder, and that's really, it's, there's just been other things on the agenda, and that hasn't happened. But with the break we have this summer, that's certainly something we can move forward on.
Okay, so I'm hearing September, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And the other thing is the citywide living wage ordinance, this was discussed. I brought this up in December, maybe, maybe it was not me, it was somebody, it was December. Then we discussed it at the retreat, and so I'm wondering where that is.
I think we're working on it. We just circulated a model to look at, and for staff.
Okay.
We haven't had any substantive discussions on it, but that's something that we'll be coming back from the council, I suspect, towards the end of the summer, early fall again.
September, perhaps?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put it down for September. That's it.
Yeah.
I just, going to, Ryan, maybe while done this, remind council members, apparently there's a card for Mike Mittel downstairs on Tom's counter, and if we can stop and sign it on the way out tonight, they can get that off to him. That's it.
All right. Enjoy your summer recess. Meetings adjourned. See you third Tuesday in July, earlier than I thought.